Special call meeting on alcohol license. Uh, Mr. Mr. Clerk, would you call the role for me, please?
Is this a special call meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council? The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Here.
Your Honorable Catherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
Your Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable Naima Gil Yard, District Four.
Here.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accounted for.
The Honorable Council Member Khalid, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Well, before we get into the presentation aspect of this, uh, meeting, I would ask, is the, uh, attorney here? Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Could you give us a brief synopsis of why we're here at this time?
Uh, on last Friday, there was an emergency TRO, uh, filed by the Burn Lounge, uh, in reference to the temporary suspension of alcohol revocation here, uh, revocation license. And as part of that hearing, the judge was aware that there was upcoming April twenty-seventh hearing, but the court, uh, under the circumstances, asked, could we have a hearing sooner than April twenty-seventh? So I told them that I would speak to the requisite, uh, city officials and see if that could be done legally as it requires for advertisement and as well as to, uh, speak with you. And after speaking with you, looking at the code, there was enough time to give notice for this special hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Clerk, are representatives from the Burn Lounge here?
Yes, I believe we have, uh, Attorney Waters, Attorney Richardson, and I don't know if Ms. Carter is on or not.
Okay, uh, let's, let's begin the presentation with, uh, with Chief Meadows.
Yes. Good afternoon, uh, ladies and gentlemen. On, um, March the nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, I had the opportunity to sit down and meet with the, uh, License and Permits Unit, uh, within the South Fulton Police Department. And I was made aware of, uh, a number of violations associated with the Burn Lounge. As a result of that meeting, I made the decision to, uh, temporarily, uh, suspend, uh, the liquor license for the Burn Lounge under emergency action pending a review of those facts before the elected body. I have, uh, Major Tina Johnson, uh, on the line, and she'll actually go through, uh, the facts associated with those violations, uh, for the body's consideration. Uh, Major Johnson?
Major Johnson, are you there?
Yes, I was just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so as a, a result of several, uh, gunfire and assaults that took place at Burn Lounge, uh, that's what insti- insti- instigated the investigation into, um, frequency of events occurring at Burn Lounge. Based on our inquiry, um, we found that they were in violation of the city ordinance for alcohol licensing, section sixteen, three thousand one, uh, suspension or revocation grounds for, uh, suspension or res- revocation, section eight, A nine, where, um, which states that the failure by the licensee to adequately supervise or monitor the conduct of employees, patrons, and others on the licensed premises, including but not limited to the adjacent parking lots or areas which may be lawfully used by patrons of the licensed establishment to protect the safety and well-being of the general public and those utilizing the premises. So the instances that substantiated that violation was on Burn, on, uh, October fourteenth, Burn Lounge, there was an incident involving a customer and a female employee of the establishment, um, who it was responsible for providing enforcement at Burn Lounge. The employee assaulted a customer and was charged by, uh, police with simple battery. And again, on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, Burn Lounge failed to adequately monitor and supervise their conduct of employee when the same female employee, uh, shot another customer after getting into a verbal altercation, and that female was charged with aggravated assault, possession of firearm during commission of felony, and possession of a firearm by a convicted felon. Uh, in furthering with the grounds for suspension, revocation, they were found in violation of section A twelve, uh, which states violations of any other laws or ordinance relating to the operation of the establishment of a licensed alcohol business. And the grounds under that was Burn Lounge was determined to be in violation of City of South Fulton Titles fifteen, chapter two, section fifteen, twenty ten, keeping a disorderly place, where Burn Lounge had two incidents involving gunfire and assaults that had taken place on two separate occasions within a twelve month period, and which was evidenced by the crime of aggravated assault on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, and simple battery on October fourteenth, twenty twenty, as the two incidents that substantiated the violation of the keeping a disorderly place. Uh, the investigation also sure- showed that Burn Lounge was in violation of, uh, section B, where establishments on the premises for consumption of establishment, alcohol consumption premise establishments will offer, that offer musical entertainment, shall have at least two paid security officers who are certified or registered or licensed by the state to provide security services and on duty daily from six P M. until close. Um, police investigation revealed that on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, when the police responded to the aggravated assault shooting that took place at the premises, Burn Lounge was unable to, uh, meet that ordinance requirement and provide that video footage or images to the police involving that investigation, uh, as well as, uh, they did not have the security officers that who were certified or registered by the state, um, in compliance with that section of the ordinance as well. And, uh, the last violation was, uh, section A sixteen, where we looked at the high frequency of calls for service at the location. And within the past five months from the date of this incident, the date of the receipt, which was March nineteenth, they had had, uh, one aggravated assault and one simple battery case. As outlined previously stated, the October fourteenth, twenty twenty incident, as well as the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one incident of the aggravated assault. Both, both incidents stem from the same employee. And so, uh, the incidents that we described just demonstrates the pattern where Burn Lounge is unable to adequately supervise and monitor the conduct of employees. And there has been a trend in violations by the employee and, and, uh, the police felt it was necessary to intervene for the safety and well-being of the public.
Anything?
Yes.
Anything else to add?
Well, that's it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to, uh, put those facts before the body for consideration when it comes to the Burn Lounge alcohol license.
Okay, thank you. And I think we have, uh, the Burn Lounge, we have, I'm thinking, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Waters, is that correct?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Ms. Waters.
Yes. Good afternoon. And thank you, Mayor Edwards, and the city council members, Chief Meadows, and Attorney Hyman, for allowing us to have an opportunity to come before the board to have this hearing regarding the suspension of the alcohol license for Burn Lounge. I am Attorney Denobia Waters, and I do represent Ms. Shauna Crocker, who owns a Burn Lounge. And I'd like to first start off by just addressing the issues, uh, surrounding the suspension of the license. Um, particularly the high frequency of calls to the police, uh, that gave rise to an emergency issuance of the suspension for the alcohol licenses of Burn Lounge. Uh, and with all due respect to Chief Meadows and the, the parties who are involved in making decisions about whether or not in a, an organization or a club, for this matter, uh, licenses for alcohol should be suspended. Um, we understand that there's a lot of concerns with regards to, uh, employees being involved in incidents that, um, would render that the police would have to be called. However, this license was suspended on March the nineteenth by Chief Meadows under a emergency situation whereby a shooting occurred. This suspension was due to, uh, are deemed to be, uh, an emergency, and the high frequency of calls to the police officer and the cameras not working, all was not something that the owner, Ms. Shauna, uh, Shauna Crocker, um, deemed to have been so excessive that it would require a, the suspension of her licenses at that time. She has always been in the posture of providing the best security, um, that she could at this club, and that she also hired the City of South Fulton police officers to monitor the parking lot and to be on duty during the hours when these clubs were, um, when the, the club is operating. On the nineteenth, when this incident happened, the chief of police had pulled the officers who had been previously working for the club off duty to, um, for the Burn Lounge, um, without any notice or, uh, information as to why they were being, uh, pulled from, um, being able to serve as, uh, off-duty officers. Um, and we still don't know why that was so. There was never an opportunity for Ms. Crocker to have a dialogue with Chief Meadows with regards to the concerns that they had as it relates to security. Um, we reached out to Chief Meadows, uh, after this incident to see if we can get this resolved. We could not get it resolved. We could not get any responses. And hence, we did file the emergency injunctive, um, relief with the Superior Court of Fulton County, whereby we did have that hearing, as Attorney Hyman has indicated to this body. And the judge essentially ordered that we have this emergency hearing. And let me step back for a moment. When this license were, was suspended on, under the emergency situation, um, there was nothing that was given to Ms. Crocker to give her some guidelines as to her license being suspended, when she would have a hearing, um, the amount of time that she would be re- re- required to appear before the city council to make the case about her suspension. None of that was given. She received this suspension via email and, um, with a notice that says within forty-five days that, um, you have a hearing, a hearing would be scheduled within forty-five days, which is so contrary to even your own ordinance that says that if a license is suspended, then you should have a hearing within thirty days. Short of that, and I presented that issue to the court on last Friday. In addition to that, um, this, um, thirty days, outside of the thirty days, it gave us no opportunity to do anything with regards to corrective measures, um, in these incidents. When you say a high frequency of incidents that's happening, you're speaking of essentially two incidents that have happened over the course of seven years of this club being open and operating, and more particularly over the last twelve months, um, as we have requested the open records regarding those calls that was of a high frequency. We found that there was a total of eight calls in a twelve-month period. And the emergency that gave rise to the suspension of this license was based upon these two incidents. While they are very serious incidents, they are not, in our own opinion, and in my own mind, as a practicing lawyer, would rise to the level of a high frequency of calls. Um, but I, I give a deference to the chief because he has a tough job, and he has to make those decisions whenever there is, he believes that the public is, safety is at risk. He has to make those decisions. All we are asking is that we have the opportunity to at least address what the issues are, to, to be able to offer up some remedial measures, uh, and, and to, um, correct whatever issues that we may be having at the club, which are very minimum at best, uh, to address the concerns. Um, because of this emerg- this, um, the suspension of her, the licensing, her business has been shut down for more than three weeks now. Um, she has lost over twenty-five thousand dollars a week, uh, because of that. Um, normally, according to your, your own ordinance, it gives some indications as to when a person's license is suspended or a company's license, uh, alcohol license is suspended, that the, on the first suspension, it should be, you know, thirty-day suspension. Well, the hearing that was set would have been outside of thirty days. And for a first-time, um, offense, the most egregious, uh, penalty was placed upon this business. And so we just simply come before this board asking that we have some dialogue to try and remedy the situation, to take whatever corrective measures that are necessary. The employee who is at issue here has been terminated. Uh, the issue with regards to the recording on the cameras have been addressed. Um, that, um, the police officers have been hired. Um, they were already working, and we would like to talk with Chief Meadows to find out why there was a lifting of those officers from the premises, um, prior to the March nineteenth incident happening. As a matter of fact, I believe it was Officer Taylor was working there the days prior to this incident. And for whatever the reason, was pulled off of the job the day that this incident actually occurred. And, and there was no notice given to, um, to, uh, Ms. Crocker in that regard. Um, what we are asking is an opportunity to have this suspension, first of all, to lift the suspension of the alcohol license, have an opportunity to meet with and partner with the city to do what is best and in the best interest of the cities, the city, the citizens of the city, and, um, to make a safe and, um, fun environment at Burn Lounge. Um, we're asking to be able to continue to do business in the City of South Fulton County. Um, after seven years of being in business and having an impeccable record with very minimal or, or no issues whatsoever, um, we, we just think that the, the actions that has been taken has been a bit harsh. And, and while we understand it, we are willing to work in partnership with, uh, with Chief Meadows to figure out what is the best security measures that we can take, um, and to do whatever is necessary so that we can stay in business and continue to do good business.
Okay, thank you ver- very much, Ms. Waters. Uh, Mr. Richardson, whoever wants to come on, we are limited in time. I want to make sure I get to the people because the people live in the area, uh, to hear their comments. So, Mr. Richardson, do you have anything you want to add, or Ms. Parker?
Not at this time.
Okay. Ms. Parker? I can't hear you.
Hi, Mayor Edwards. I just want to thank the council for taking this emergency hearing and hearing us out. So we appreciate your time, um, for listening to myself and our attorneys. Um, I want to address Councilwoman Willis. I would love to sit down with you and see if we can rectify this situation along with Keith Meadows. Um, in no way do we at Burn Lounge want to be in non-compliance. We have been in the community for so long. We have provided a safe social gathering place for the people in the community. And we just would like to continue that along with the help of the community. So thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing, Mr. Clerk. I know that, uh, our rules call for ten minutes, uh, for and against. I'm gonna stretch that out because of the people, if I can get at least twelve minutes, it was okay, uh, for, for public comment. And I would be, I will begin with those who are speaking for.
Yes, sir. Uh, speaking, those citizens who have submitted comments in support of the police department's recommendation, we received four, uh, comments. Uh, none of the persons who indicated they would make their live comment are present, but I will begin to read the four, uh, statements in support into the record.
Go right ahead, sir.
The first comment comes from Shirley Price Garner, who lives on Burdette Road in District Six. She states, "I applaud the City of South Fulton for monitoring all businesses to ensure that they function in a safe and reasonable manner to our citizens. I am a minority in this city, white, and as such feel classified by Councilman Khalid as someone who does not count because God made me white and not black on purpose. However, I have never been made to feel that way by any other official, and that includes Mayor Edwards and the entire South Fulton Police Department. I trust they will continue to uphold the law in our city regardless of color. Right is right and wrong is wrong, and color should not make no difference. And that goes for Councilman Khalid also. He, of all people, should know this. What is he demanding to only concentrate on the minorities in the city and cite them? Leave the majority to do whatever. That is a sheer double standard. If bars cannot comply with regulations and keep them safe, then shut them down. Matters not the color of the ownership. I do not patronize these establishments, but that does not mean that I am against them. I am opposed, however, to ones who choose to continue to violate the law and expect to get away with it. Revoke the liquor licenses and don't look back. Keep up the good work, City of South Fulton." Next is, uh, Mrs. Pamela C. Harvey, who lives on Miller Road in District Three. "This establishment is a danger to the community. Constant violations along with shootings have continued, even though the owners were warned. The residents and council member Helen Willis are trying to revitalize this area. Liquor, shootings, and strippers don't mix into the community. I am all for shuttering this establishment down for good and reevaluate the zoning laws for establishments such as this one." Next is, uh, Mr. Alvin Reynolds, who lives on King's Place in District Seven. "I've lived in South Fulton for twenty-five years and have seen changes to the area then and now, and can't understand why we would want to revisit the unpleasant nature that warranted must-needed change in this city. Revoking liquor licenses of facilities that continue to have issues that lead to the disturbance of the community and even the businesses itself is not a method that is something new, in my opinion, to prevent and combat the things that this city viewed in a negative content when we are trying to move away from this method. I do not believe is to disenfranchise any business with these issues, but have to adhere to the ordinances they fall upon so that the community and businesses can thrive together. We have got to get better at the way we see and conduct ourselves to rid this negative halo that continue to hover over our great city." And the last statement is, uh, Ms. Melissa Patterson, uh, who lives on the site Court in District Five. "I trust the new police chief to make decisions that will keep our community safe. If this business is not creating a safer environment for the community, then I support taking the license. We have some areas within our city that are unsightly. It's time to clean up the area and get rid of businesses that bring the community down." And that completes the comments for, in support of the police department. And that completes the comments for, in support of the police department's recommendation.
Okay, let's reset the clock for comments against. Make that twelve minutes, Mr. Clerk. Go ahead.
We did receive fifty comments in opposition to the police department's recommendation. I do have several people who wish to provide live comment. I have a, a couple of them online. When I call your name, please state your name, your address. And your, make your comment. You have two minutes to make your comment. I see Mr. Joe Thomas.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Thomas. I live at three eight six six Carham Way, City of South Fulton. My only concern, I, you know, with the pandemic and stuff going on, businesses are closing and, and we, we're trying to keep open. We, we, we need entertainment spots for young adults. And when I saw that the revocation of the license was, was in the process and I didn't have all the, the facts. And, and so that's what I was calling about. If, if I can get some, some idea of just what's specific major infractions have occurred to bring it to this point that the city is seeking to revoke this establishment's license. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Next, we have Mr. Brandon Johnson.
Hi, I'm Brandon Johnson. My address is fifty six thirty two Bathin Road, City of South Fulton. I have a, a business not only in the same plaza, but also since I live in the same district of that plaza. I wanted to articulate that I myself have been a victim of the supposed HOA's not wanting me in that plaza either. I've had code enforcement just within the last year, barging to the store and accuse us of barbecuing and grilling sold meat on the weekends. But this is about burn. So I've learned that, I've, I've loved Burn Lounge's collaborative approach to working with us. To welcoming, welcoming me to the community and always keeping an eye, an overseeing eye over my store, my staff. And especially my wife late at night. Their security have been more than helpful. And these are during the hours that most of you are asleep and or planning for your next day. So before going off of hearsay for the community, I'd suggest that the city council and mayor come up with some operational procedures. To vet the reality of what is really being said and to facilitate collaboration between the direct community and the business owners. The Bible says that the death and life are in the power of the tongue. I pray that you all make the right decision. Minimize that tongue, that negative tongue, and reopen the Burn Lounge. Brandon Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. There's another person under the handle Daddy's Girls BBQ. Would you like to unmute and make your comment, please? Okay.
My name is Marquista Darling. I am at fifty four sixty two Waverly Drive in Atlanta. I'm also within the city of South Fulton. I was with a gentleman that stated, that came on first, like what was the real reason of the, of the issue? I support Burn Lounge as being a female business owner. The lounge has done nothing wrong. So I'm trying to figure out what was the real infraction as to why the permit was even taken. But I support, I support Burn Lounge and everything that they're doing and how they're giving back to the community.
Okay, thank you, Daddy's Girl BBQ.
Right, thank you. I will begin reading the comments and I will get as many in, in the next nine minutes that the time allows. The first is from Kimzy, who lives on Delano Road in District Three. She states, "Burn Lounge is a great place for the younger crowd that love to enjoy ourselves with our friends. It's even a great place to have a gathering such as my birthday and it's in September. But I had to cancel it due to the city closing it down. I want the Burn Lounge back open. First, the news said one thing, then they switched it up and trying to make it seem otherwise. But God will fix it and we will be waiting for the comeback and return of the burn." Next is from Zachariah Carter, who lives on Camelot Drive in District Five. "Burn Lounge and ownership have been a blessing in my life, provided me a weekly job when I was going through a bad time in my life. COVID nineteen. I couldn't find, and losing my wife. I was homeless and they allowed me to work and stay until I was back on my feet. I have seen fire, marshal, social distance practice, and hire police officers. Brought in to make a safe place to have fun, work, and eat good. If I had a vote, it would be to return the license and reopen Burn Lounge." Next is Jerome Allen, who lives on Morning Creek Circle in District Five. "No reason the Burn Lounge should not receive their license and keep them working so they can pay bills and take care of their kids." Next is Dayton Yancy. "Hello, my name is Dayton Yancy and I'm originally from Red Oak Projects, born and raised. Burn Lounge has been a great asset to the community through sponsoring youth teams, annual coat drives, toys for tots, and back to school supplies for the kids. Also might add the jobs that are provided in the community. Burn Lounge employs, employs more employees than any other business in that plaza. It would be a disgrace to take away something valuable to the community, especially when we have bigger problems inside of the city as a whole. Let's find out what all parties can do to help fix the problems and a better way to serve the community as a whole. Thanks." Next is Larry Bryant, who lives on Outlook Way in District Three. "Burn Lounge brings entertainment to the community." Next is Zamonte Carter, who lives on Camelot in District Five. "I have never had nothing but fun and entertaining, enjoyable time in my visiting of the Burn Lounge. Please allow the business to receive back its license and give me a place to get away, stress-free envi- environment." Next is Wayne Stallings, who lives on Campbell Drive in District Three. "I've been in the community for fourteen years. I've been to Burn Lounge on New Year's almost every year since they've been here. I've seen white people, black people, celebrities, and even some city officials along with politicians throughout my time at Burn. They got one of the best menus on the south side for late night cooking. I saw the news and I could not believe that this was the same Burn Lounge that I've been attending. Then I didn't want to believe what I heard, so I kept on watching and I asked several questions. And I've come up with an answer and it's not like this, you can't let a couple spoiled apples ruin it for the rest of us. This neighborhood needs more black-owned businesses. You don't need to take them away. You can't control what people do, but one thing that I can say, I feel more than safe whenever I've been in there." Next is Johnny D, who lives on Estonia Drive in District Four. "Burn Lounge has been a staple of the community for safe and fun nightlife. Burn Lounge also employs young, respectful, future entrepreneurs." Next is Renee, who lives on Britley Terrace in District Six. "I have been to the Burn Lounge several times. Each time I had fun without incident. Crime has been a problem and continues to be a problem with the Burn Lounge not operating. Other areas don't close down establishments because of incidents. They address the issues. Taking money from the people that work there isn't helping crime. It's hurting households. Again, I never felt threatened at the Burn Lounge." Next is Mr. Jared Walker, who lives on Traverse Court in District Five. "Hello and good afternoon. Today I wanted to take the time to talk about Burn Lounge. Since their grand opening, I have had great experiences and vibes with the staff. Never gotten a chance to meet the owner face to face, but what I do know is that she knows how to manage and make sure that all customers are in great hands. Burn Lounge is not by all means a sex trafficking place or any other illegal activities related. I urge you counselors to bring back Burn Lounge and let the people enjoy the vibes and fun experience. Thanks and God bless." Next is Ms. Gloria Smith, who lives on Orchard Drive in District Three. "We would love for Burn Lounge to stay in our community. We visit this establishment frequently, maybe once a week. And the service is great. People are great and it would be great for our community if it was reopened." Corey Parks, who lives in District Two. "Good afternoon. With all due respect, my encounter, visit to the Burn Lounge has been nonetheless very professional. Speaking in terms of my dealing with staff, from time upon entering to leaving the atmosphere, very laid back, nice environment." Next is Yasmin Patterson, who lives on Old Madison Place in District Six. "Burn Lounge has been in the community for six plus years now. The establishment has been a place where people go to get delicious food and great drinks in a safe environment. I was born and raised in the South Fulton area and I can say this is the only establishment on the south side that I go because I feel safe. Community leaders are always preaching about pouring back into the community and blacks investing and bringing black-owned businesses. Then let's do just that. Continue to let Burn Lounge provide jobs for residences of South Fulton. Allow them, Burn Lounge, to continue to provide a safe place for people to socialize. Focus more on listening to the needs of your business owners because they're the ones who know the needs of the community to help you bring, to bridge the gaps. Best of luck." Next is Randy Collins, who lives on Key Haven Place in District Five. "Please renew Burn Lounge liquor license on the fourteenth. Burn Lounge is a great place for people on the south side of town to party and unwind. I've been employed there for six years and it has always been a safe, clean, and upstanding place of business. I support Burn Lounge and South Beach and hope they both can resume back to regular operation." Next is Jacqueline Millings, who lives on Emerald Point Circle in District Six. "Burn Lounge has been in the community before the city was even created. Instead of trying to ruin the business, why don't officials provide necessary resources to keep the area safe? Because the police are often doing nothing except riding up and down Roosevelt Highway. Next do something about Old National. That's where the crimes are and prostitution ring resides." Next is Shanny Winfrey, who lives on Saber Way in District Five. "I have visited the Burn Lounge on many occasions. I've always had an enjoyable time. I support this establishment." Next is Lynn Motley, who lives on Miller Road in District Three. "My name is Lynn Motley. My wife's name is Margaret and we have been to the establishment many times, have no problem. My wife is a secretary and I am an inju- inju- engineer for thirty years. And I've been on my job for thirty-two years. When we get off work, we like to go have us a drink and I smoke me a cigar. We never had any problems. For four years, we've been going there and we've been living on Miller Road for twelve years and we are part of the community. Thank you for hearing my wife and I. Thank you very much." Next is Jasmine Conwell, who lives on Renear Drive in District Three. "As a resident in the South Fulton, Atlanta area, Burn Lounge has been a safe environment for local adults and out-of-towners to enjoy a very peaceful, clean, and friendly establishment. The community stands behind Burn Lounge one hundred percent." And one last one, Melanie Sloan, who lives on Estonia Drive in District Four. "Burn Lounge has been a great entertainment venue in South Fulton. This venue is needed in our community. And I would just like to state for the record to the citizens that all comments that were sent in has been shared with the mayor and council for their viewing. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Ms. Gilliard, Councilwoman Gilliard?
Yes. I just have a couple of questions. So you're opening it up now to questions, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd like to ask the chief a couple of questions. Chief Meadows?
Yes, ma'am.
So, is, so do I have this right? I think I heard this correctly. If my memory serves me well, and it usually does. There's only been two incidences in eight years. And both of those incidences involved an employee who no longer works at the Burn Lounge. Is that correct?
Well, we only, we're only looking at two incidences for these purposes. I have Major Tina Johnson on the line. She could actually give you more insight about, you know, other events that have taken place historically.
Councilwoman, we only reviewed the past twelve months, so the, the cases that we pulled. As their attorney mentioned, it was a total of eight cases that they had in total for the past twelve months period. We investigated two that were confirmed and closed. And those are the ones that are listed. We are still investigating two additional cases involving the business. But they are still under investigation and so we did not include those in our packet at this time.
Okay, so, so let me ask this and I don't know whether you know these details or not. But of those eight incidences, were they, do you know whether or not they were minor? Or were they serious like these last two that, that involved shooting? You know?
So the other, the majority of the other incidents, let's see if that was eight. So the four, for the incidents were minor crimes and we cannot directly relate those crimes to the businesses. So we don't count those against the business. They would have been thefts from vehicles or damage to vehicles in the parking lot. We don't include those when we're assessing crimes at the business. We only looked at the crimes that directly related to the business itself or person or employees related to the business. So the two incidents that are listed here and then the other two incidents that we're investigating that hasn't been closed yet and so we're not discussing those at this time.
I can't even have a hint. I mean, are they bad or are they real bad or are they just medium bad, just a little bit bad?
Oh, one would be an investigation of a, a possible aggravated assault and the other one would be damage to property and reckless conduct.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard?
So, wait, 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 just give me one minute. I got just one, one more question for the chief. So chief, thi- this is a, a hard question. And, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to get, to, to get an answer. So, based on the evidence, which would be cases. And we know that two are bad and we know that, that the person responsible for those two no longer worked there. Well, before I finish that, why, why were the officers pulled? Why did you pull the officers?
So one of the officers that was working there was, he worked actually in the license and permits section. And I had made it clear, and I, this was an internal matter involving employee discipline. So I really don't want to discuss that, but I, I did not want people that, that are charged with the responsibility of inspecting of these businesses working there in an off-duty capacity.
Okay, so, so my, so my last, my last question is that, that you have, have, have brought this forward to pull it and so there is no opportunity for there to be any kind of, of discussion or, or something? Because I, I'm almost sure I heard that, that there was no discussion before it was pulled. And, and is there some opportunity to, to sit down and have some dialogue before it goes to the, to the, to that next step?
Well, we're always open to dialogue with Councilwoman, with, with, just to give you some historical perspective. You know, with, even with the businesses that we've taken liquor license from. There were a, a number of different conversations that, that take place before we had actually gotten to that space. And so we encourage our people when they, our businesses to reach out to our license and permit staff when these sort of events come up. And I know that our staff has had conversations with the Burn Lounge, you know, about some of these violations. Well, all of these violations in fact. And so, you know, moving forward, we expect, you know, a certain amount of cooperation and making sure that those businesses reach out and stay in compliance when we set these standards with respects to, to our business. Certainly, we're, you know, we're never closed off when it comes to, to having dialogue and trying to work. Because our goal here is always compliance. If we get compliant, then. If we get, uh, compliant, then, um, Councilwoman, there, there, there really isn't, um, a need for, for these sort of steps.
Okay, and then, and then the last thing, is, is the Burn, what kind of lounge is the Burn Lounge?
It's, it's kind of like an after hours drinking spots. Uh, uh, I think it's the way it's classified. Um, and I think, um, they, they, um, smoke cigars and things of that nature. I don't, I would be hesitant to, I don't know if it's a smoking bar or not, but I, I think, um, that's the kind of focus of, of, of their clientele.
And, and it's not a strip club?
May, may I, may I interrupt and answer that for you, Ms. Gillyard?
Yeah.
Yeah, Edwards, may I have the floor?
All right.
Thank you. Um, thank you for your question, uh, Councilwoman Gillyard. We are not an after hours, uh, venue. We are not an adult entertainment venue. We are actually, actually licensed as a hookah lounge. Um, and we have a cigar bar next door to the hookah lounge. Our operative hours used to be, uh, pre-COVID was six P M. to four A M., which we are licensed to be open that late. Post-COVID, we, we've been open from eight P M. to about three A M. We stopped pouring according to the ordinance at one forty-five A M. So we are licensed as a hookah lounge, not an after hour spot.
All right, uh, let me, let's give you all these things.
Yes, thank you.
Let me, let me just say this for, for the sake of time, uh, because we, we wanna come to some conclusion today. Uh, I see that, uh, Ms. Gums, then I see Mr. Khalid, and I will end this conversation, uh, with Ms. Willis.
Mayor, Mayor Edwards, my question was answered through, uh, Ms. Shawnee.
Okay, and I'll get Mr. Khalid, then I'll end with, with, uh, uh, Ms. Willis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, first, I just wanted to, to clarify with the clerk. Did you say that there were fifteen, uh, people in favor or fifty?
Five zero, fifty, five zero.
Okay, um. I really just have a couple of comments and one question. The first is, uh, people, uh, as was mentioned in the comments, there has actually been an increase in violent crime nationwide throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, just as a side note, there's actually also been an increase in suicides amongst African Americans and particularly black men throughout the pan- pandemic. So this pandemic is, is causing all sorts of abnormalities, and I think that that's important to keep in context as policymakers, that we are not making policies based on what I pray was a very abnormal year. Um, the, the second is, is ju- I, I do have some concerns. This is the second time that even though violent crimes are on the rise, this is the second time that I'm hearing about South Fulton Police being pulled from parking lots after a set of crimes has occurred in this, uh, rise of increasing violence. And I'm just not sure as a matter of policy that, you know, whatever happens today at all of the other nightspots in South Fulton, I'm not sure that pulling police out of securing parking lots during this current pandemic runway is maybe the best policy. I did wanna ask Ms. Crawford, um, because there was a, there was some evidence presented that, uh, I guess on October fourteenth or March seventeenth, one of those dates, you were not, there were not post-certified, or you were not able to secure post-certified officers. Um, I wanted to ask you about that. Did you make an attempt, even after South Fulton, uh, police were pulled? Did you make an attempt to secure post-certified officers from some other law enforcement agency?
Thank you for your question, Councilman Khalid. Um, from my understanding, we were only allowed to employ City of South Fulton Police from the day that I've been open. I've been open for about six and a half years. Um, from the day that I've been open, I have employed City of South Fulton Police Officers. Um, I had never been without City of S- Police, uh, City of South Fulton Police Officers up until recently. Um, when Officer Taylor was pulled from his detail after hours, Officer Taylor was the officer who alerted me that he was pulled from detail. At that time, I was out of town. Um, I was scrambling, um, to find police presence in the parking lot. Um, I reached out to Officer or Captain Neesman, who is a family member of mine. He in turn put me, um, in touch with another officer, who I guess for the City of South Fulton, um, is responsible for placing the off-duty cops at, at establishments like mine. Um, he was in the process of doing it. I had police presence the night of the incident of the seventeenth. Um, but they were short-staffed, so the police left at twelve. Um, I was informed prior to one of the, uh, af- post-one of the incidents that I needed to have City of South Fulton Police present from the time I opened to the time I closed. Once I had that conversation that happened, I, I immediately employed a police officer from City of South Fulton from eight P M. Until four A M. as long as they were available. Um, Officer Taylor fulfilled all of those shifts until he was pulled, and then um, the other officer was helping me get that started, but the incidents happened when the officers weren't present in my parking lot.
And, and just, uh, real quickly for, for clarity, you said that you had come to understand that you could not hire officers from other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Uh, how did, where did, where did that come from?
I mean, I was, I was told that. I was told that prior to, um, I was, I was told that prior to any of things ever happening, that we had to employ City of South Fulton Police. I had a East Point Police Officer at one time, and I don't remember who it was, because this was, uh, a while back. But I had a City of East Point Officer Pittman that was with me for about three years. And all of a sudden, when City of South Fulton came into, um, creation, I guess, they told me that he couldn't work there, so they pulled him off detail, because I had Officer Pittman and Officer Mosley for the first three and a half years of business.
Thank you. Okay, uh, uh, Ms. Willis, go right ahead and you are the last speaker.
Um, Mrs. Shawnee, uh, do you recall about two years ago, Chief Meadows and I coming to your establishment, sitting down, having a conversation specifically about some of the security concerns in the plaza, and also how talking to you about improving, uh, security measures relative to your business?
Yes, I recall actually requesting that meeting from you and Chief Meadows. The way that that meeting came about was you and Councilman Khalid had an event inside of my cigar bar. That was my first time becoming acquainted with you. Um, and I came up to you and introduced myself to you and requested a meeting with you. You then in turn told me to send you an email. You gave me your business card. You told me to send you an email and request with your assistant to have a sit-down meeting with you and Chief Meadows, right? So I did that. We had a meeting inside of my lounge, along with one of the other business owners, um, female business owner in the plaza who owns a tax company. All four of us sat down, and we had, it wasn't the best conversation to begin with. Um, you guys went on to tell me how you did your due diligence and researched who I was. You know, praised that I was, um, on top of my business licenses and my taxes were all paid up. Um, and I thought that we had a very good conversation, and you didn't really have too many negative things to say about my business, because you didn't really know what was going on. And I guess you were just going based off of, I guess, some of the things that you heard in the community. Um, the only other time you and I have had a conversation was after the incident with Mr. Render's windows. Um, with that incident that is, I guess, still under investigation. You personally called my cell phone and had a conversation about that incident, and you were the person to to- that told me that I should hire double police staff to be there from open to close. The next day I had that done. Um, me and you were on a phone call for about twenty-five to thirty minutes. I thought the conversation was good. Um, the camaraderie in our conversation was good. I told you that I wanted to be in compliance. Anything that I could do to be in compliance, I was gonna put my best foot forward, as I always do. We got off the phone. It was good. The next time I saw you was when there was a press conference in front of my business. That's the only, only.
Let me make a correction. I did not have a meeting in my district with Khalid. Khalid, um, bogarted, like he did with the press conference, his way into my district, and had a meeting in your establishment, and I found out about it on social media and I showed up. That's when you met me, and then that's when you, correct, reached out to me. We sat down with Chief Meadows and discussed some of the concerns in the community. So I wanna clarify, when people are saying Chief Meadows is not collaborating with businesses and not trying to talk with businesses, we did sit down with Chief Meadows, you and I, and another business owner in that plaza, and we did have a question, and we did have a conversation, a very candid conversation about the business, about the s- public safety measures, and you're correct, it was, on my end, a positive conversation. Now, when the shooting happened in the end of February, we had a conversation when Mr. Mike Render, uh, Window got shot out, and my only concern, and I was very transparent with you, was that the video cameras weren't working. So we talked about that. You said you were gonna correct that issue, and I told you that as a black female business owner, I would support you, but you had to follow our ordinances. Then, within thirty days, another shooting ensued. And this is why we're here, and that particular meeting is in, I mean, that particular shooting is one of the reasons why Chief has pulled your liquor license. Now, let me say this. You harp on the fact that your business has been there for seven years. Well, let me harp on the fact that the average resident that lives behind that plaza where your business is located have been residents in that community for over three decades, to include my mother-in-law, who has been there since nineteen seventy-seven, who has raised three sons there. So, I give all respect to residents who have concerns, who have been there for over three decades, and who's concerned about their po- quality of life being impacted by the gun bow- violence that ensues from your business. I refute the fact that you went on the media and said that my desire to close your business is to create a city hall location. I am talking, the, to create a, a city hall location, because I have never had a conversation with you about a city hall location being in that plaza or anywhere in my district, because I have no desire for a city hall to be in my district. So for you to get on TV, uh, on the media and, and, and put that false narrative, I don't appreciate it. The other thing is, I'm only concerned about improvement of public safety matters. This district, since I have been sitting in this seat twenty seventeen, has trended with one of the lowest crime rates in the city. And the, the gall of you to bring someone, a council member in this district, to disrespect my mayor, to disrespect my police chief at a press conference, who has the highest crime rate in the city, and refuses to do anything about it, is disrespectful, not only to me, but it's disrespectful to my community, and it's disrespectful to the mayor, and it's disrespectful to our, and to our chief, who has, who has done a yeoman's job with keeping the crime rate low. The other thing is.
Can you bring it, Ms. Willis? Let's bring it to, we have not.
Okay, the other thing is, there may have been increased crime in this nation. There has not been increased crime in this city. We have done every, our chief has a decreased, de- decreased the crime in this city. Now, I wanna end this by saying, I support black businesses. I support all businesses. Majority of the businesses in the two plazas in District Three are majority black. I do not, I don't have shootouts from Tiffany Nicole Business. I don't have shootouts from Sasha Sweets. I don't have business from, uh, Ulysses, who's been there for over forty years. I don't have shootouts for Mike Render's business. The shootouts that have occurred in that parking lot have ensued from your business. Now, instead of you being adversarial towards me, the police chief, uh, mayor, what you need to do is do what you say you're gonna do, and sit down and have a conversation and work with the people who are leading this community and this city. And if you are doing back-to-school drives, if you are doing Toys for Tots, if you are doing Coats, Coat Drives, please let me know so that I can spread that information, because I don't know any of those things that you have done in District Three. Now, I have done those things, but I don't know how, any of those things that you have done. What I am asking at this time is, because I have no more room for error when it comes to your business. I don't. What I'm asking for at this time is for Keith Meadows, Chief Keith Meadows, who you need to respect, instead of disrespecting him, uh, to enter into in a, a security agreement with your business. I don't really care about these fifty comments that came through here. Because at the end of the day, what I care about is the public safety concerns in my community. I'm about my community on purpose. I'm not about black on purpose. I'm about my community on purpose. Don't come in my community and disrespect residents who have been there for over three decades. Don't disrespect my mayor by bringing the person who has the highest crime rate in this district, calling him a black Trump. Don't disrespect my police chief, who has done a yeoman's job with decreasing crime in our city.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate every, all, all the comments that we had. At this time, let me just say for me, uh, if we can get to the point where we can have a dialogue, and like we did with other places we had, uh, and we've worked out, and sometimes the dialogue that we had and the agreement we had failed, then we had to do other things.
And this.
If in fact, if in fact that we can have a constructive dialogue, and I'd be more than happy to be a part of that dialogue, uh, we can go from there. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion at this.
I made the motion, Mayor. I made the motion, Chief Meadows, um, and, and, and it has nothing to do with these fifty comments, but it has everything to do with my heart and my heart for the community. So Chief Meadows sent me over, uh, asked him to send me, after talking, having a candid conversation with Mr. Mike Render.
All right, looking for a motion, Ms. Willis.
Chief Meadows sent me over a security plan that I would like for him to enter into, uh, Burn Lounge with, and, um, and I think it's a reasonable security plan. Um, I talked with Chief Meadows about it. He's okay, uh, with me going down this road.
So just take your motion, take your motion.
I would like to make a motion for Mrs. uh, Shaunica, what's your last name? Because it's Shawnee in this thing.
Crocker.
It's, it's Crocker. I bet he is Shaunica Crocker.
I could probably, go ahead, make your.
I would like to make the motion for Ms. Shaunica Crocker to enter in a, to a security plan with the Chief of Police. Uh, and after that security plan is signed and agreed upon, um, I will, um, agree to giving, uh, Burn Lounge, uh, one last chance.
Second. Properly move the second. Any further discussion?
Discussion.
What is that, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Thank you for recognizing. Uh, my discussion is, is quite simple. I know, um, it actually is direct, is directed towards business owners in our city and, uh, possibly, uh, potential business owners. I would hate for anyone to watch or listen to this hearing and think that this is how we conduct business as a city, and that we're okay with rhetoric or the dissension amongst, possible dissension amongst council members uh, that may have nothing to do with your businesses. Uh, we're working through our infant stages, and we are business friendly. I think through all things, it's important that we understand each other. Um. I only know because I've had a conversation as well that this business owner in particular didn't arrange anything with any other council member. Um, I know that it's intelligent to not try to rebuttal at this time about that, but we have growing pains. We're not as established as other municipalities, but we're good, we're getting there, and I'm asking that you guys bear with us and, uh, embrace some of our chaos as we continue to grow and try to make South Fulton the best way, uh, we know how, and as we're learning, it could be. Thank you.
All right, I'll, last, I'll let Mr. Miss, uh, Councilwoman remember. All right, I'll, last, I'll let Mr. Miss, uh, Councilwoman Member Rouse speak and then I'm gonna call for the vote.
Mayor, I was in the queue.
I'm gonna let Ms. Cop, Ms. Rouse, we got a little meeting coming up.
I understand that, but I'm in the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna let Councilwoman Rouse speak and then I'm gonna call for the vote. Thank you.
One, I don't know if it's a second to the motion, but I want to know if the business owner has actually seen this agreement that we're talking about before we take action on it.
No, we have not, um, this is Attorney Waters and I, I am concerned that you're asking us to enter into an agreement that my client has never seen. I, we're willing to sit down and talk with Chief Meadows about that, we don't have any problems with that. We want to partner up with the, uh, officials there to remedy whatever situations that are there. So we would like, I would definitely like to be able to see that.
That. Thank you, um, with that saying, um, Mr. Mayor, I think the motion should be revised to allow the chief to sit down with the bu- uh, business owner. Because I wouldn't want to sign anything I hadn't seen. So I think, um, providing the opportunity for the chief to sit down on that security agreement. Um, and work out the terms, uh, might be a more to, a suitable motion.
Are you making a motion or are you asking for consideration for the?
I'm asking for consideration, uh, that's why I asked, I didn't think it had a second.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, actually did, yeah, Councilmember Reeves.
Okay.
Uh, make it a motion, are you taking, were you taking consideration for Councilwoman Rouse has proposed? Ms. Willis.
And she called you.
Um, can you restate what the motion was? And Mayor, why are you, I mean, you, we were in discussion and you only allowed.
Why I am, I mean, I lead this meeting and I'm trying to get this added because we got another meeting that people are waiting on us constituents.
Yes, Mayor.
All right, just, uh. Did you restate the motion, Mr. Clerk?
I don't.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. The motion is, uh, motion by Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Willis, seconded by Councilmember Reeves. For the owner of Burn Lounge, uh, Shaunica Crocker to enter into a security plan. Uh, with the South Fulton, uh, Police Chief Keith Meadows for Burn Lounge.
And Mayor, I would, I mean, is this prior to her opening because I don't want, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with her reopening without entering into a security.
That has to be said in your motion so that we can move forward.
So.
Read the motion so that we have clarity.
And so I am, I am requesting that the Burn Lounge open contingent upon entering into ad agreement. Uh, a security agreement with the chief of police, I mean, with the, uh, with the, yeah, with the chief of police. I mean, she can have, she can have her.
You're not saying, you're not saying the agreement you have, which you, I make me sure I'm clear, you're saying that they'll get together and they will talk through an agreement. And then after they sign it, then you okay with them reopening, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But I want to sign agreement first.
Put a timeline on it.
Okay, I think she's, uh, uh, I think she, Ms. Waters, I think we, we're, we're there. Uh, we're not talking about agreement that's already been made, we'll sit down and formulate an agreement. Then we'll sign that agreement upon.
There, I am fine with that, there, yes.
I can.
Okay, no, it was having, the second emotion was, uh, was, um.
Councilmember Reeves.
You're all right, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir.
I was probably moved the second, I'm not having any further discussion, let's vote please, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
All right.
Councilmember Khalid. Councilmember Khalid.
Um. I'm going to abstain, what reason? It is not clear the timeline by which this, uh, agreement needs to be entered, they've already not had their liquor license for several weeks.
Okay, thank you for your attention, next.
Councilmember Baker.
Abstain as well and for legal purposes, uh, I shouldn't share.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, that motion was approved five zero two.
Okay, uh, Burn Lounge, thank you so much and everybody, today that we come to some agreement on something. I too, as the mayor, would have to have some conversation, Mr. Uh, Mr. Meadow, uh, as to what that agreement looks like. And hopefully, hopefully we can work something out, we can move forward.
And Chief, Mayor and Chief Meadows, I would like to see that agreement too.
All right, let, okay, let's.
And Khalid, go fix your crime rate.
Meeting's adjourned. Clerk, do I need a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Right, move the second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Rouse.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
All right.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker. Uh, we are adjourned at four eleven P M.
Uh, let's go, we're late by Nick, next meeting, let's get, let's go right into that, Mr. Clerk, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, the next meeting is the four P M city council work session. Roll call, Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
You can come back to him.
The Honorable Catherine F. Rouse, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three, Mayor Pro Tim. The Honorable Naima Gilyard, District Four.
Who, yes, here.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant for.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
Uh, we do have a quorum. Mr. Mayor, are you present? Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
She's trying to get in, uh.
Okay.
They put a timeline on it.
City Clerk, my understanding is, okay.
I'm back now, uh, yeah, Mayor Edwards is having a problem, um, with his computer. And I believe Mayor Pro Tim Willis is in the meeting now.
He was also holding.
I am present.
Okay, Mayor Edwards, I see you, are you available? Mayor Pro Tim Willis, would you like to carry the meeting?
Clerk, I'm here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we had some difficulty getting in. All right, uh, will you call the meeting to order, please, this is the, uh, work session for Wednesday, April fourteenth, four o'clock.
Yes, sir, we, uh, we actually just did the roll call, uh, we do have a quorum and I will mark you present as well as, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Okay, first we're getting the items.
Uh, first item is the twenty twenty-one legislative session update and tracking, Andrew Long with A R Long Company.
Mr. Long.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, um. Good afternoon, um, city council members, my name is Andrew Long. I am here to give you a brief report of the twenty twenty-one legislative session. Uh, I was very honored to represent you throughout this session this year. Um, there were six, uh, priorities that you came to consensus to. Um, for our twenty twenty-one legislative agenda. Um, the first of those six priorities is Fulton Industrial Boulevard and H B four four five. Uh, I simply want to say that, um, to start out, we were successful in H B four four five, uh, this year. Um, that bill passed both the House and the Senate and is now on the governor's desk, waiting, uh, signature. What the bill does is from Interstate twenty south. It is an annexation bill that, uh, annexes Fulton Industrial Boulevard into the city of South Fulton. Um, I want to real quick, that, it's not really all about, you know, giving credit, I wanted to give you a synopsis of. How this bill actually got passed, Representative Roger Bruce, uh, introduced H B four four five in the House. Um, got all the required signatures that he needed to get it through the House Local Committee. Uh, and get it passed out of the House floor on local consent, it went over to the Senate. And, um, when it got over to the Senate, the, uh, sponsor was Senator Sonia Halpern in her first year. And, uh, Sonia Halpern was very responsible.
Okay.
Um, for helping this bill to get passed, Sonia Halpern was very responsible. For having everyone view this bill differently than they viewed it over the past few years. Um, brief example, what I mean by that is I'm born and raised here in the city of Atlanta and I've only known the governor to be a white male. And, uh, when Stacey Abrams ran for governor a few years back. Um, that opened up my vision to see that the office of governor in the state of Georgia can be someone other than. Um, a, a white male. And what Senator Sonia Halpern did with this legislation is, um, she opened up everybody, everyone's vision. On what this bill can actually be. Um, she brought a lot of the, the parties to the table and wanted everybody to be in agreement. Before she just ran with the legislation as the Senate sponsor. Uh, so she did that, that, uh, that happened. Um, I also want to, um, give, uh, credit to Mayor Bill Edwards. Who was at the Capitol this year on multiple occasions. And when Senator Sonia Halpern, um, called herself bringing everyone to the table. Uh, one of those entities was, was the city of Atlanta, uh, to which, um, Mayor Bill Edwards was there at that meeting. Uh, and was the one who actually proposed a dividing line of Interstate twenty. Um, at which point I believe Ms. Sattler Jones and Mr. Don Tombs. Um, orchestrated something in writing to show that I twenty south would be, uh, annexed into the city of South Fulton. And I twenty north would be annexed into, uh, the city of Atlanta. Um, but separate from that, that Atlanta piece. Uh, Mayor Bill Edwards was also very responsible in meeting with the governor, meeting with the, um. With the local committee on the Senate side and several of the players that made it possible for it. Uh, for a four four five to happen, uh, to get back out of the Senate and back over to Roger Bruce, uh, for final passage. Um, when the bill did finally get back over to, uh, Representative Roger Bruce, it was late in the day. Uh, on legislative day forty and, uh, although we believed the whole time that we would be successful this year. I sat and watched from about nine thirty till about twelve o'clock or eleven fifty-nine. I watched the Speaker of the House call, uh, several, um, Republican House members. Who were trying to get bills passed on the last day, on the final day. And, uh, never called for, uh, Representative Roger Bruce, but at eleven fifty-nine. Um, he did call for a second supplemental local consent calendar. To which there was only one bill on that calendar and it was H B four four five. The entire House agreed, uh, and it passed one fifty-two to zero. Um, and then also mentioned that it, it has fifty-four to zero in the Senate coming back over to the House. So it passed both chambers, we were successful. And now it's in the governor's, uh, it's on the governor's desk, waiting for his signature. There are three things that can happen to this point, which I am monitoring very closely. Number one, the governor can sign it and it will become law. Number two, the governor can veto it and then it will not become law. Um, or number three, the governor can take no action whatsoever, in which case it still becomes law. Um, so I, I believe that four four five, H B four four five will become law. Uh, and that either the governor will sign it or that, uh, he won't do anything. I don't see a reason for him to veto our legislation, uh, this year. Uh, in regards to the other five, um, priorities that we had this year. Um, that I do need to give an account for. Um, one, I mean, number two would be heat-related youth sports injuries, that bill will be taken up by, uh, Representative. Um, Casey Carpenter on next year, he has already started the language. Uh, but it did not get introduced for this session. Uh, number three was short-term rental regulations, uh, that's a big fight with some other big companies with the state of Georgia. Nothing was actually done, uh, this year, um, to regulate short-term rentals. But that's something that still can be done on next year, since this is the first of a two-year term. Um, number four, repealing citizens arrest law, that bill was taken up and passed. Uh, by a member of the Republican, um, party in the House. Uh, that bill did pass and, uh, Governor Kemp wanted credit for that legislation. And that's why it was taken out of the hands of, um, of, of, of representative down in Garden City. Um, and, and it was taken over by, uh, the Republicans and one of his floor leaders, the governor's floor leaders. Um, the T-SLOSS bill does not need statewide, uh, approval, that's something that, uh, I believe Mayor Edwards has already. Um, explained to the council that you all can do on your own. And then finally, as far as residency requirements, um, this is something that, uh, Chairman Roger Bruce now of the delegation. Wants to have further conversation on, uh, after the session and bring back up for the twenty twenty-two, uh, legislative session. Uh, there are two things I believe that, that are going to happen or that, uh, Representative Roger Bruce wishes to happen. Um, in short order, number one, to increase the communication between the legislative delegation and the city council. He's mentioned that on more than, than one occasion, especially after the, um, Congressman John Lewis, uh, street renaming situation. We want to have increased communication on that. And then number two, he wants to have continued town halls to hear from the residences to see, um. Exactly what's the best way to move forward, not only on, um, Congressman John Lewis, uh, street renaming. But a lot of, uh, two or three of the other priorities that we have that are going to carry over into next year. Finally, I want to say, uh, Mr. Mayor, because a lot of you, uh, did have questions about cannabis this year. Um, there was a bill, it was more of a cannabis cleanup piece of legislation and it was Senate Bill one ninety-five, it did pass. Um, there are two land-grant universities, uh, which is Fort Valley and the uni- uh, Fort Valley State University. And then the University of Georgia that are allowed to cultivate. Uh, there are other universities, including H B C U's that will be allowed to research. But only two universities will be allowed to actually cultivate and grow. And the rest of the bill just actually gave some cleanup legislation, some, some pieces of cleanup, uh, legislation to. Um, the overseers of the cannabis, uh, which is the Georgia Medical Cannabis Commission. And, um, some language was, was cleaned up, uh, regarding that, so, um. Again, I was very honored to represent you this year. Um, this H B four four five got recognized by a lot of people, not just the city of Atlanta. Um, but Delta and others, a lot of big players were involved in watching what, what, what happened in H B four four five. And ultimately it passed and, um, I, I will open up the floor for, for any questions regarding the legislative session.
Mayor, are you going to entertain questions to do, are you here? So I guess he's stepped away, um.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, I was muted, but I, I called your name, you're in the queue.
So I, I, I would like to ask Mr. Long, um, a few questions about, uh, the Fulton Industrial Bill. Mr. Long, I know that Fulton Industrial, um, has been very challenging and we've been going after this year after year. I'm very appreciative of the senator who represents me and my district. Uh, District Thirty-nine, Senator Halpern, for being instrumental in, um, brokering a deal between the two municipalities. But I don't want to, uh, forget one person. But I don't want to uh, forget one person who paid, who played a very instrumental role in this process and he was not mentioned. And um, the mayor know of this person because the mayor knows what he did. Now, the day before, the day of, or sorry, on the last day of the session. Uh, one of the reasons the bill was delayed because Fulton County had a concern about uh, that one and a half, one and a half mile stretch that was not going, that they were going to have to be responsible for providing services, public safety to. And what Fulton County was concerned about is if our bill went through and got approved and Atlanta bill, which would have to probably be approved next year to get their portion um, is not approved, they would still have that one and a half mile stretch they would have to provide public safety to. And so as a result, it was up in the air whether or not City of South Fulton bill was going to make it. And as a, as a matter of fact, they pulled it from the, the consent agenda. And Senator Albers directly told uh, um, House Representative Bruce that that was his concern. And what he said is that all parties had to agree. Well, there was one person that was instrumental in pushing this along and that was Sheriff Patrick Labott. Sheriff Patrick Labott, I called him and told him what the issue was. He asked, should he call Roger Bruce? He did. Roger Bruce allowed him to talk with Senators uh, Albers. And he assured uh, Senator Albers that if this bill were to go through, that the Fulton County Sheriff Office would take care of the public safety needs for that one and a half mile stretch. As a result of that, Albers was in agreement. He was, he was happy about that. And it's, and the House Representative Roger Bruce told me that that was very helpful. And he really appreciated Sheriff Labott for doing that. Uh, Mayor Edwards, am I wrong or right in this matter?
Yeah, he did offer to control that area, you're right.
So let's not forget about that instrumental piece. Because that was very instrumental and that was in, in, and uh, the GOP had, had a lot of concern about that. And so did Fulton County.
All right.
Thank you.
Let me just end by saying this because I want, you know, it's not about the credit, it's about getting the job done. And collaboratively, I must uh, say thank you to the Fulton County Board of Education. Uh, Ms. Dove and also uh, Francesca, who, 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 we had to convince, and it took a lot to join our side. And also, believe it or not, I have to also thank Fulton County Board of Commissioners uh, for also uh, coming along and, and understanding the importance of this. So while we throw, I just want to make sure that we at least acknowledge them for, for helping us to get to the point where we can get this bill passed. So thank you all very much.
So Mayor, would you agree to say that this was a, a team effort? It was no I, it was a team effort to get this pushed along?
We never said that and Mr. Long never said that either. It's always been a team effort. That's why I acknowledge those who were at the table, who collaborated to get it passed. All right. Thank you, Mr. Long.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Take that and please.
Next item is item two, Presentation, the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, the presentation will be provided by Michael Wallace with the National League of Cities.
Wallace, how are you?
I'm good. Thank you. How are you? Uh, pleasure to be here to talk to you today.
Good.
And I want to thank Mayor Protem for uh, inviting me to speak today. I think so that met her at the National Black Caucus, the local elected officials uh, briefing. I did similarly for them. Happy to do it for you all uh, today too. Um, just go quickly through what I think is most relevant points here so I can uh, fit everything important in on my time. So uh, you probably know the American Rescue Plan Act, PAT, became law on March eleventh. Uh, what stands out about the bills, for the first time ever, all nineteen thousand municipal governments are entitled to a direct non-competitive federal formula grant from the Treasury. What that means for you all as a city over fifty thousand residents uh, is that you're going to be uh, entitled um, to a calculated share of the sixty-five point one billion set aside for all uh, cities, towns and villages. And so are your neighboring jurisdictions. Um, this is money, funding that you are entitled to. And that's coming to you. You don't have to apply for it as if it were a competitive grant. You don't have to justify need to receive these funds. Uh, we learned today from the Treasury that they are going to set up a portal on the treasury.gov website that cities who are entitled to receive a share of these funds will go to uh, to enter in their information and communicate with the Treasury uh, that way. We expect uh, Treasury to deliver um, more information on guidance about spending. Uh, sometime this month, the bill requires Treasury to make those funds available to your city by May tenth. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about what uh, we're advising cities to do between now and May tenth to get ready um, to use these funds in a way that affects lasting change and sets, sets both your city and your residents uh, on the path uh, to economic recovery, economic mobility, um, and, and just generally gets you on the right direction. I'm going to go to the next slide. Just the overall state and local funding under this bill. This bill is unique in that every level of government is getting a uh, a, a calculated amount. So your state will receive a portion of the one hundred ninety-five point three billion set aside for them. For local governments, cities and counties each are, are getting a, a, a equal split. So there's a hundred and thirty point two billion for all local governments, sixty-five point one for municipalities, sixty-five point one billion uh, for counties. Um, so what that means is that your county also ought to be getting an amount. For this funds, your residents count twice. One, your resident counts once for the city portion and once for the county portion. There's no prohibition against double counting here. In addition to the direct funding you're going to get from the local coronavirus fiscal recovery fund, uh, each state is going to get a um, a, a grant for uh, well, you receive a portion from the ten billion dollars that's set aside for broadband. So to the extent that your cities uh, need to build out broadband or contemplating municipal broadband or working with a private partner uh, to connect those residents and communities that uh, that haven't been connected really to broadband networks yet. This is a good time to be talking to your state, um, state government about how they plan to use those, their portion of that ten billion dollar block grant for broadband build-out. Next slide, please. I won't spend a lot of time here. If you haven't already seen the estimated amount uh, for your city, you can go to NLC's website and see that. I had to caution you though, we don't know what the final uh, dollar amount of every grant is going to be. Because uh, the Treasury Department is still making those calculations. I'm going to talk a little bit about, about how your grant amount was calculated. Because it bears on how we think uh, you ought to be making expenditures out of those funds. So for cities like yours, over fifty thousand, uh, Treasury is borrowing the community development block grant formula to make the calculation. The formula, it's a, it's a solid anti-poverty formula. It takes into account your total population, poverty rate and rates of housing instability. And housing instability is measured either by um, the age of your housing, so pre-nineteen forties housing. Or it's uh, measured in terms of how many residents you have uh, living in single units. So if you have families doubled up, tripled up in one unit, it says, you know, that you do, you don't have enough housing available for all your residents and you get a plus up for there. What that means essentially is the funding is targeted more heavily, weighted more heavily to those communities with greater need compared to similarly sized communities who have not been impacted as much by coronavirus or who don't have longstanding challenges uh, in those areas. It was important to NLC and important to Congress to have those funds targeted in some way rather than a pure per capita uh, allocation so that more funding flowed to areas of greater need. Not going to dwell on the small cities cap uh, because it doesn't apply to you. There is no cap for your, for your grant amount. Uh, but funding will be released in two tranches. This, this is a good thing for cities too. As you know, um, the federal appropriations process has been unreliable the last several years and it's really hard to build into your local budget. Um, funding from the federal government, for instance, the CDBG grant or a home grant, homeless assistance funds. It's hard to know how much you're going to get. With this funding, you're going to know exactly how much you're going to get over two years. You'll get half of the calculated amount you're entitled to upfront by May tenth. Twelve months after you take possession of your first uh, half, the, uh, the Treasury will make the second half available to you. So you have two years to think about how to use these funds, but all funds have to be spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Any money that's not spent by the end of twenty twenty-four will be returned to Treasury. I forgot, I should make one more clarification here with regard to CDBG. This is not uh, the CDBG program in any way. The only thing this uh, program does under Treasury, this grant program for you is borrow that formula to calculate the amount. So CDBG requirements, eligible expenditures, uses, uh, none of that applies to the funding that's coming to you from the Department of Treasury from the American Rescue Plan Act. Next slide, please. There's uh, I've spent a lot of time here. There's, there's a lot of questions still outstanding about how these funds were calculated and, and what the eligible uses are. I can talk about what's in the bill, but really the, the defining work of the bill is happening at the Treasury Department. They are writing up guidances. They're making final calculations. A real challenge to them has been the fact that there's no central collector at the federal level uh, of information regarding all nineteen thousand municipal budgets. And so um, rather than rely exclusively on Treasury data, the Tre- or right, on census data, the Treasury Department uh, has the authority under the bill to supplement census data with state-derived data and locally derived data to perfect the calculation so that every dollar of the sixty-five point one billion gets allocated out to municipalities. There's a website there on the bottom of this slide. That's NLC's website. You can go there to see how much the estimated amount for your community is. Again, it's only an estimate, a ballpark estimate to give you an idea of what you're working with. Um, but the final calculation still has to be made. The problem here is, is Treasury didn't have uh, information on every single municipality. And we're working closely with them to make sure that they calculate funding so that every single one of the nineteen thousand cities, towns and villages um, gets a share. Next slide, please. There's four eligible expenditures uh, of funding uh, under the bill that I'm going to talk about here. Um, and, and Treasury is going to fill in the gaps. So the first one is to respond to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus and the negative economic impacts. Uh, uh, spending can include assistance to households, small pres- small businesses, nonprofits, and aid to impacted industries. What this says to us is if you got a portion of coronavirus uh, or CARES Act coronavirus relief funds through your state when the CARES Act passed, if you use those dollars to set up programs to intervene in, in, in evictions or foreclosures to help small businesses who could not access funds otherwise uh, with grants or loans from the city, you can plug these dollars right into those new programs uh, seamlessly. Uh, B, it allows for municipality to provide the thirteen dollars per hour above regular wages. This is only for municipal employees, frontline workers who qualify for hazard pay. For those employees, you can pay them up to thirteen dollars an hour over their, over their wages, but you don't have to. That's an eligible expenditure in the bill. Third, and probably most significantly, the bill allows for revenue replacement. This is something that the CARES Act prohibited. So this is new. What it means is if you had to make cuts over the last year, cuts in personnel, furloughs, layoffs, cuts in services, reductions in services provided to residents, that sort of thing. You can restore those back to the levels uh, that they were at prior to the coronavirus emergency. Also, uh, it, one, you're, when you're bringing your staff back, if you've had to make cuts, we think this is also a good time to consider um, professional development activities or capacity building that could enable your city in the long term to make more sophisticated types of interventions uh, for residents in distress to get them back uh, on the road to recovery. Lastly, the bill permits spending on water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Those are the three categories. We don't know how strictly Treasury will interpret that or if they will flexibly interpret that. So we just have to sort of be patient and wait to see what exactly kinds of projects would qualify under those three categories. Next slide, please. Uh, these are the federal regulations that are listed in the bill. We expect more will be coming from the administration, but this is what we know now. Uh, you are able to transfer payments from the grant amount you're receiving. You can transfer partial payments to private nonprofit organizations. Those would be like community development corporations, housing providers, homeless services providers or um, uh, people who work with your small businesses. Uh, a public benefit corporation involved in transportation. That essentially says you can transfer funding to your transit agency. Or a special purpose unit of state and local government. That could be a fire district, a library district, a sanitation district, uh, uh, metropolitan planning organization, a council of governments, that sort of thing. What, what this says to us really though, is that there's ample uh, permission here to think about your funding both locally and regionally. Because every local jurisdiction is receiving aid under this bill, every local jurisdiction can come to the table with new resources. And as we know, uh, everything from housing markets, job markets, where your residents live, where they work, these are all regional uh, regional, re- regional things. Uh, and so it might be worth your while uh, to be, begin a discussion with your uh, neighboring jurisdictions about what their plans are for their funds. So that as a region, you can maximize uh, what you're trying to accomplish. Uh, that next bullet point just says that there's no restrictions on local governments for local stimulus type activities. There is on the states. There's a section of the bill that says states should not use the Recovery Act uh, as a, as a uh, as a justification for cutting state payments to local governments. We're very concerned about the states cutting aid to localities justified on the basis of the fact that localities are getting this funding from the federal government. So the bill says states shouldn't do that. Uh, there's already a lawsuit against it though. We're not sure if it's going to survive. We're not sure exactly how binding that provision is going to be. But for you, uh, if a city wants to do local stimulus in terms of making direct stimulus payments or providing targeted tax relief to residents, that's possible uh, with the support of these funds. In terms of restrictions, grant money may not be deposited directly into a pension account. Congress's intent here is to make sure that, they're trying to tell states and cities not to use these funds to address longstanding pension liability issues. Uh, and uh, the last piece there on requirements at, like I said earlier, you're entitled to these funds. You do not need to justify need to receive these funds, but you do need to record and track how you use these funds. Because Treasury can at any time ask for an accounting of, of uh, how you spent the dollars to make sure that they were spent in a way that's uh, within the eligible expenditure categories. Word of advice here is that you really need to figure out a way to track these dollars in the long term. As a practical matter, Treasury cannot systematically oversee this grant to nineteen thousand new grantees. Uh, so what they're probably going to do is randomized, do randomized sort of inspections with their inspectors generals to go look and see how cities are uh, spending. They'll also probably rely on feedback from the public uh, in terms of uh, you know, members of your, your residents who either agree with how you spent it or disagree with how, how you spent it. You just want to make sure you'll be able to provide Treasury uh, an accounting of every dollar spent. This, these uh, these requests for how you spent the dollars, they could go on for years. They could actually go on for decades. It's, it's entirely possible the elected leadership sitting today will have turned over and Treasury will come to your future leadership and asking for accounting of these, of these funds. So you'll want to give them uh, a chance to be able to explain that. But the other reason really to track how you're spending these dollars is so that your future leadership can build on the success uh, that you've created with, with the expenditures uh, out of, out of this grant. Next slide, please. You'll see here, um, in addition to the direct dollars your city is getting uh, under the one point nine trillion dollar package, there's lots of funding streams available um, directly for your residents. It's kind of an overwhelming bill, right? There's, there's lots of funding available. The way NLC is encouraging cities to think about this is to use this act, the dollars under this act, to stabilize local government operations, stabilize households and stabilize small businesses. And if you prioritize those, uh, the way you want to spend your dollars will sort of flow, flow from there. Uh, so in terms of your residents, your households, you'll see here, they're going to get some direct stimulus. So we have the direct stimulus payments, fourteen hundred dollars per person. Uh, at, at, uh, as long as their income is not over eighty- at, at, as long as their income is not over eighty thousand dollars. We're encouraging cities to think about how to help cities maximize these dollars for themselves, help your residents maximize these dollars. We, oh, and I know I say I got to wrap up here, so actually, if you could just go to the next slide, or maybe, and next slide after this, and one more slide. Here's where, here's where the point I was sort of getting to, the principles for, for spending that we think cities ought to be thinking about now. So for your residents who are unbanked, your residents who either bounced a check and can't get into a financial institution, who've never engaged in a financial institution, there may be a language barrier there, that fourteen hundred dollars is a real chance for them to enter back into the financial mainstream. If you're thinking about economic mobility, you, you need access to a financial institution. If you want your residents to be put into a path of financial mobility or economic mobility, they need access to a financial institution. You should be talking to your, your banks, your depositories, or credit unions about if they've thought how these fourteen dollar direct stimulus checks might be used to reopen bank accounts. If there can be forgiveness for people who've been banned from those banks to come back into the banking system. We're recommending cities, that first point there, use dedicated grants and programs first whenever possible. So you're going to get a grant that can be spent on housing, that can be spent on, on broadband infrastructure, spent on lots of different things, but there's under other funding streams in the bill that'll do the same thing. Try to use the other funding streams first, save your direct dollars to fill in the gaps where you need gap funding, gap financing, or other purchases that can't be relied on for those other streams. We're actually recommending cities, don't obligate every dollar right out of the gate as soon as they get it. We don't know what the future holds in terms of post-recovery, and your city may need to pivot. And so you, if you're holding onto those dollars and not obligating them, that gives you some flexibility to pivot when you need to. Assess local government operations and community needs. Don't just stop by stabilizing your local government operations. Your residents, residents everywhere have been harmed through no fault of their own by coronavirus emergency. They've probably lost wages. They may have been able to make their rent, and able to make their utility payments. These are dollars that can make them whole so that they can go find work when the economy reopens. Prioritize fiscal stability and returning to work. Save the pet projects for earmarks. This is not a good funding, you know, to set up a new cowboy museum or something like that. We have opponents out there who will be looking to find bad uses of funds that they can raise and, and say, you know, we'd never should have sent these dollars directly to local governments. We're collecting good stories to, to battle that. And lastly, your congressional delegation is part of your success. When you're ready to reopen, you put these dollars to use. Invite your whole delegation to reopenings and ribbon cuttings, et cetera. This is a paradigm shift, funding going to every local government. If it's successful, that means we can see repeated success in the future. President Biden is now talking about the jobs plan. We're asking the president to make his jobs plan contingent on sending funds again directly down to local governments so that, so that cities don't have to negotiate with the state or negotiate with other entities in order to be able to get, get their hands on those dollars. We think the best decision makers are the local ones, and, and this bill really has a chance to help us make that case for future dollars. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions or turn it over back to you. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Okay, a council member, Willis. Thank you so much, Mr. Wallace. Council member.
I was trying to get off mute. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I thought that your presentation would be beneficial to our city. I saw it at the National League of Cities Conference. I have one question, and maybe I missed it. Do you know how long we have to spend the funds? I know you're saying, don't direct it, don't allocate it all directly.
Right. Yeah, you, you have until the end of twenty twenty four to spend, to spend your dollars. So you do have, you do have some time there. I think our advice, I mean, don't sit on it either. Definitely address your immediate needs as soon as possible, but just recognize that we don't have all the answers for what the reopening looks like. If, if people are going to return to downtowns, what commercial real estate is going to look like? If people are going to return to storefronts? You may need to rethink, you know, the, the way that you set up your, your commerce in your city. And having these extra dollars will be helpful to do that.
Okay, the, one other question. Can you briefly talk about the difference between the American Rescue Plan funds versus the CARES funding?
Yeah, absolutely. So the big, the real big difference, of course, is that funding is going to come to you directly. The CARES Act funds only sent dollars to cities with five hundred thousand residents or more. That was only thirty six cities across the country. You're going to get these dollars, and you're going to be held responsible for, for those dollars. It is a big responsibility, but it is also a big opportunity. Like I said, you can use these funds, the, the big difference from CARES Act is you can use these funds for revenue replacement. So if you've had declining revenues from property tax, sales tax, income tax, or importantly, fines or fees, you can replace that. We view fines and fees owed to the city as lost revenue if you haven't been able to collect that. One way you can help your residents return to the economic mainstream, if you have residents that owe the city something, you could use these dollars to pay back those debts. And then the next logical step would be to forgive the debts of your residents to the city so that they can have their slate wiped clean. If you think about it, we've really sort of gone into a cocoon over the last year because of coronavirus. And it's time, it's, you know, it's time to come out. The city, the city will get a new fresh start with these dollars. One of the things you ought to be thinking about is how do you make sure your residents get a new and fresh start once the economy fully reopens and once the vaccination has really taken hold?
And my last question is, with these dollars, you're saying we did get, get direct allocation. You're saying that we have until twenty twenty four to spend all of the dollars, and you said that we will have restrictions, and the restrictions will come down from Treasury. Will we get, once the census data comes out, and I think it is in April, is a possibility based on census data, our allocation could increase?
It's, there's a possibility it could increase, and there's a possibility it, it could go the other way. But I will tell you that the formula is weighted so that more cities that have greater need in terms of poverty and housing should be getting more than similarly sized cities that have less need in those areas. And that was intentional because we thought that, you know, what we saw over the past year in coronavirus is that longstanding gaps in racial equity have only intensified over the last year. The work that cities did to close those gaps prior to the emergency has been undone. And, and that data shows up in poverty and housing instability. And so we think it makes sense for cities that will have greater need there to receive greater resources, but they should use those resources to address those gaps directly.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kalid.
Hey, thank you. First, I just wanted to make a quick correction. I, I believe that the census announced today that, or this week, that they would not be releasing that. Um, the, I, I want to ask you, you, you talked about some pretty progressive examples, things that we could do. Are there cities that have begun to enact these or that have enacted them under the CARES Act?
No, because the CARES Act was much more limiting than, than these dollars will be. So only those thirty six cities over five hundred thousand residents did. But, but I will say, actually, there are a couple of innovative things. The city of San Antonio, the city of Boston, what, what we found was that small businesses that did not have good access to financial institutions, local financial institutions, like small community banks, they were not able to access funding through SBA or Treasury. It took a financial institution willing to submit that application on behalf. If that financial institution didn't think it was profitable to do so, they probably wouldn't. What some cities have done, recognizing they don't have a small community bank that's really considered a stakeholder in the community, the city actually provided the financial services themselves with these dollars. They set up new grants, forgivable loan programs and grant programs to their very small, Main Street small businesses so that they could continue making payroll and so that they didn't, they didn't have to declare bankruptcy or restructure financially in order, and, and basically to keep them stable so that when the economy reopens, they are ready to quickly reengage in the commercial activity.
And is there a clearinghouse of these best practices? It sounded like you, you said you were collecting them.
Yeah.
Tell us when you're done, if, if there's a place that we can look at legislation that other cities are putting forward?
We, we sure do. We actually, NLC got a Bloomberg grant to track how cities were using their CARES Act dollars. We have at NLC a local action tracker that we put together with Bloomberg Philanthropies. There are tens of thousands of examples categorized that you can search through to see what other cities have done. You can search by population to see what similarly sized cities have done. You can search, search by commerce, by housing, by homelessness, by whatever keyword you want, and see what cities have done with their dollars, whether it's been successful or not, and then, you know, replicated or hopefully improve upon it within your own city.
Awesome. And then the last question that, that I'll ask, I know some other people may have questions. The, is my understanding that the ARP will reimburse up to eighty five percent the costs of starting non-police crisis response services? Could you talk about that?
Yeah, well, I, I'm not the expert on that. I wish, I wish I was a little more knowledgeable there, but we do have that expertise at the NLC. So I'm happy to follow up with you with the, with the appropriate people in my organization.
Thank you.
To get that info to you.
One of the, there has definitely been an increase everywhere, including the city of South Fulton, in domestic violence and, and, you know, those intimate partner violence incidents. So that would be a great use, but thank you so much.
Yeah, and, and to that end, right now FEMA is reimbursing cities for activities related to ending homelessness. One category of that are partners fleeing from domestic violence. If you have shelters set up for partners fleeing from domestic violence, that would be something that would be eligible for reimbursement from FEMA right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kalid. I don't see anyone else in the queue. That being said, Mr. Wallace, thank you so much for your presentation. We really appreciate you.
Okay, well, we're here for you anytime you need us. Thank you for the time today, Mayor.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is item three, City of South Fulton's Comprehensive Plan Process and Updates. This presentation will be provided by Jared Lombard with the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Mr. Lombard.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as you guys bring up the presentation and city council members, I'm here to give a, just a brief update on our activities so far on the comprehensive plan update. As, as you see on the very first slide, you know, we, just to give a brief update of why do we plan, it's really to, you know, address a lot of what the previous presentation said about identifying your needs, but also preparing the city of South Fulton for the future and build community as well. So if you can go to the next slide. Now, the city of South Fulton's first comprehensive plan was actually adopted based on the Fulton County plan that was completed in twenty sixteen. Now, updates to local plans are required by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs every five years. So from twenty sixteen, that's now twenty twenty one, and so you are required to update your local plan. Regional commissions like ARC must provide local governments' direct assistance if you requested, and you went through that process earlier this year. And that assistance, because it is free, this is a free service provided by ARC, is a, what is, we consider a basic plan update. If you're, you know, this will keep you in, you know, you're still have your qualified plan, but, and you know, next year or in the future years, you want to do a new plan that's much larger, a larger process, you're free to do that as well. So if you can go to the next slide, and we'll just go ahead, one more. All right. Now, each community, what ARC prepares, and we're doing twelve of these plans right now, is we provide a holistic view of your community, looking at land use, transportation, economic development, housing, based on community input, existing plans, and the rich resource, data resources at ARC. And we develop an update, a new list of needs and opportunities or assets and challenges. And this is really the key, key issues facing the city of South Fulton, and also that some of the key assets for the city of South Fulton. We will do a new updated land use element. That's something that we've heard from staff that they're really looking forward to in this planning process. We're, you know, just talking about broadband. The state now requires broadband as part of the comprehensive plan element. Just looking at the data, there, there is actually pockets in the city of South Fulton that currently do not have broadband service provided to them.
Right.
And then finally, also an updated community work program. And for me, this is really the most important part of the plan because this really provides you as the city council, the residents and the city staff, an updated list of activities that will, you would implement over the next five years. If you can go to the next slide. And we, we at ARC also view this as a partnership. ARC, we review that all your plans, and you've done a lot in your short time as a city. We also facilitate the general public and steering committee, committee engagement. We distill all that input, look at the data, and we really develop that updated plan document. But it is a partnership, and you as a city, you really try to give us a lot of local information and guidance. You know, you know, we may see something or may overlook something, and we really rely on the city staff and the steering committee to really provide information to us about if we're on the right track. We do look at you as responsible for forming the steering committee, and I know that process is underway. And we're also rely on you to support the public engagement in terms of notice and awareness. And this is really, and I'll talk about this on the next slide, one of the main important parts. And we also rely on you to finalize that CWP, that community work program. If you can go to the next slide. Now, Shayla just put this link in the chat. You know, with COVID nineteen and also trying not to have many in-person meetings, we are using public input as our main hub for public engagement. And this is a great software package that allows for similar activities and input that would incur, would occur in an in-person open house activity. And we've broken apart the engagement in three phases. And right now, we're still in phase one, really trying to listen to the community on community issues and strategies discussion. Phase two, we're going to really go look, look at the land use vision discussion. And then phase three is implementation. And this site allows for discussions and input anytime during the process in each phase. So if you're really interested and want to talk about South Fulton's community issues at two o'clock in the morning, you're more than happy to log on. The link is in the chat, but it's also a QR code. And that, the, the link is publicinput.com/2021SFcomplan. And we, you know, especially the city council members, I know the city staff will be reaching out to you to really promote this on your own contact list, social media channels. The more engagement that we have at the richer plan and that we have at the very end as well. Next slide, please. This is our tentative schedule, and it's, it's been adjusted a few times. But I would say the main important thing is the deadline of October thirty first. That is your state deadline to make sure that this plan is adopted. And that requires before that a thirty day review period. So we're hoping to get a draft available at the end of the summer that would then be sent to the state for review to make sure it's okay for that meets the state requirements and normally should. But then it also gives you time between August and October for any edits and changes as well. As well, so right now, we're in that public input phase one. Starting in mid-May, we'll go into the phase two, and then in July and August, really talking about implementation activities as well. So next slide. And I think that's it, so I'll be happy to take any questions that anyone may have. And, yeah. And, yeah.
Mr. Kalid. Mr. Kalid. Can everybody hear me? Mr. Kalid, you're in the queue.
Um, so the 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 drop dead deadline to get everything done, you said you said was October thirty-first?
Correct. That if you, there is no, I would say penalty for missing that date. Um, that we, that's a strong date that you maintain your qualified local government status for certain state grants and aid.
And and we we have, we've had this question before. Um, so I would just love love for you to answer it here. If there are changes that need to be made or or that people want to make, what amount of changes constitute a significant enough change that we would go through the process again? And who makes that that determination?
Um, I'll start with the last, the last half of your question. A R C and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs will make those determination, um, based on what the change is. What a significant change it would be if it really, um, really changes the overall intent and focus of your plan. Um, where, um, it could be you're eliminating multiple land use categories, um, or you're changing, um, land uses that would really impact neighboring jurisdiction. Or you're, you adopt a new community vision that, um, is part of the plan as well.
And 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 I ask that because I do have this specific concern that we are now hearing that we will not get census data back until September thirtieth. You know, which in 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 real life means that we may not get it until mid-October and right. So how 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 does that comport with this deadline?
Um, well, I there's that deadline, and then I would say also the Fulton Industrial question as well. Um, is are two big kind of changes. Based on technology, you know, while the, you know, doing the census count is, you know, very important. We do have some pretty accurate, um, annual estimates that are developed at the small level. Um, while we may not have the exact, um, you know, number that's official of the census, it will give us a pretty close approximation of what, you know, that kind of community makeup would be. Um, but that between that, but that also the Fulton Industrial question, because that will add a significant new land use element to the city. And, you know, also what is your plan and future vision of that? And so that will be a lot of discussions going forward.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalid. Uh, Ms. Willis.
Hello, Mr. Lombard. This is an aggressive deadline for a new city, in my opinion. Um, and Mrs. Sally Jones, I hope you are, um, going to require that the C D R A Division sends out a mailer to, um, increase, uh, resident participation. Because our delay in the zoning ordinance and so much confusion in the zoning ordinance is that we need, we did not get a lot of resident participation, like over a thousand at most. Um, there are several things that I was told had to happen in this process. One, in my area, um, a part of my area does not have an overlay district. And I was told that that had to be addressed in this comprehensive development plan process. The other thing is, I was told, and I don't know how true it is, that impact fees had to be addressed in this comprehensive development plan process. Could you please speak to those two matters?
Uh, yeah, um, I'll do the overlay one first. Um, over the over overlay, the comprehensive plan will provide a lot of the policy guidance to do the overlay, and then that would be something that, um, would be done at once the plan is adopted. Um, so like the vision of the area, the appropriate land use types, um, architectural styles, that would be, um, that would be like that high-level vision, um, within the comprehensive plan. And then the actual text of the overlay would be then be based on what's that is in that. Uh, impact fees, and I've had a discussion with the planning staff, um, at the city of South Fulton. So Fulton County, um, originally had impact fees. And so there is impact, there is was impact fee legislation, um, for Fulton County. However, the way thus, it is a separate state, it's part of a comprehensive plan, um, element. However, that's beyond the scope of what A R C could provide. Um, one of the aspects of doing the, um, impact fees, you have to do a impact fee, um, study to look at what's your future growth projections, where are your infrastructure deficiencies deficiencies based on that growth element? Um, and then develop a fee schedule and list of projects that would be associated with that impact the element. Um, that would be something that we would recommend that you would put in your community work program to address, because that that would be a very, it can be a very long process and, um, also contentious process as part of that. Um, when Fulton County was had impact these, Fulton County only had impact these for the northern section of Fulton County, what is now John's Creek and Milton. They did not have impact these in the southern section. So. Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, the other question is, um, it's see, uh, can you go back to the timeline? Whoever had the presentation up?
Ms. Caldwell, are you there?
I just wanted to slide with the with the timeline of steering committee meetings and, um, and the, uh, public engagement, because I saw three steering committee meetings, and I wanted to know what type of communication is going to come out from that, because, uh, okay, what do we plan? It was a timeline.
Yeah, it's, um, I believe the last slide, the second to last.
So have you all already had a steering committee meeting?
Uh, no, we have not. Our first one is scheduled at the end of this month. Um, they will be recorded, um, and also be streamed live on YouTube, um, as well. And then we'll be working with your communication staff to to really promote that public engagement opportunity on May fourth.
So May fourth, uh, is this the only public engagement opportunity we will have May fourth? And that's right now, that's a month from now, less than a month from now.
Um, as of right now, that is, um, just because we are limited in, um, our capacity at A R C to provide multiple public engagement opportunities. However, from that's A R C run. However, um, city staff is looking at doing some more public, smaller public engagement, um, opportunities, and then they'll report back to us. So that's still. Um, forthcoming.
Okay. Ms. Sally Jones, uh, is this part, the the is the city planning to do a mailer for public engagement? Because, uh, this is too important for us not to do a mailer. We're talking about future land use.
Yeah, we can certainly do a mailer, but, um, we've also pushed out the link on, uh, the YouTube channel. We'll put that on our website. Our communication staff will push it out on social media. So, um, it is our expectation to try to get the word out as best we can. Um, that is certainly a means of communicating with the public. But, you know, we do take the chance. The a lot of times when we send these mailers out, we get, you know, hundreds of them them back. Um, so, um, you know, we're just going to try to look at several alternative ways of getting the word out.
So Ms. Sally Jones, this is a city of over a hundred thousand residents, um, and probably more than that once the census data get back. And, um, our population, our senior population is very high. And I just would hate that we are relying on social media, YouTube, and methods where our seniors, um, you know, are not engaged. And so for something as this important, um, I just would recommend that we figure out how to cover all bases.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely look into that, because this is important, as you mentioned, and we, um, share that same sentiment. And we definitely want the public to be engaged in this, uh, very important process.
And and the number one thing that residents like to say is, I mean, what the residents do complain about is that we're, they're not getting enough information, and they have requested for us to mail them more. So maybe you can coordinate with the district council persons who do mail their residents to see if information about the comprehensive development and, um, engagement opportunity can be included.
Okay, absolutely, because we'll definitely be leaning on all council members to assist us in this process.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Willis. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Gia, I think your your microphone is hot. I think your. You're next, and then Mr. Kalid for the second round, second round for him, and then we'll we'll move on. Let's go your idea, Mr. Kalid.
Um, I did not get, would you please repeat? Uh, Mr. Lombard, would you please repeat the link? I didn't get it all.
Um, yes, and it's also in the chat, um, well, but it's publicinput.com slash twenty twenty-one S F comp plan, C O M P, and then plan.
Um, and I want to, I I want to go, um, back to, um, broadband broadband. What are, um, some of the requirements, um, that the state is looking for to be included under broadband?
Um, it's very broad, um, and, um, that they kind of look at, you know, in metro Atlanta, we're very lucky that we have service in a lot of our area. However, um, they're really looking at, is this area served by a provider that has, um, speed greater than twenty-five megabits? Um, as a download, um, and then, you know, part of it, if identifying those areas that are under, are not served, um, are that, you know, how is, you know, what are the city's plans to do that? You know, we're, you know, in metro Atlanta, you know, a lot of our region has that service. Um, so we're actually looking at, you know, is it, does it have, you know, do you have fiber optics availability? Um, or, you know, is there a cer- certain segment? Just because the area served, is there a certain segment of the area that isn't signed up for that service? And we have some new data sets that allows us to explore, you know, the percentage of residents who actually are, um, who have, um, that type of service at their house. So, you know, you may have the cable running into the street, but you're actually not tapped into that service. So we're, it's, I will say, we're not a broadband planning expert. Um, however, it is, we do realize it's now becoming part of critical infrastructure in the city.
And, um, my last question is, how do we, um, build in infrastructure? You know, as it's it's really critical, particularly as, um, we move forward in the future. And because it's probably going to be federal money that's going to be distributed, you know, to the country to try and, um, address different types of infrastructure issues. And so, um, is there, um, anywhere in the plan that we can include? That because it would appear to be a a real big piece, particularly as it relates to economic development.
That's a really good question. Um, I will say, one of the, you know, you know, you have a recently completed, you know, tran- um, transportation, comprehensive transportation plan. Um, so incorporating that, but also making sure that your your land use vision relates to that. Um, you know, water and sewer availability, um, then any, um, are all kind of brought together in a holistic way to look at where those gaps could be.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Kalid. Mr. Kalid. Here, no, no, I'm here. Thank you. I was just, uh, writing, writing some questions. I thought I would have more time with with Ms. Gilley. She's usually on it with these complaints. Um, the 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 feedback session that you're going to have, uh, is there any sort of education that is given? Or do we just ask questions? I know that when we had our zoning, uh, planning feedback sessions, you know, we just kind of got feedback. And people would say things like, I want more restaurants, which, you know, wasn't really a zoning plan. So, yeah, could you talk about that?
Yeah, and there is a little bit of community educational component, um, you know, for the, I presented. Um, you know, we do have a lot of data and information about, um, the city of South Fulton that we're pulling together right now. Um, and talking about, talking about what, how does, you know, this data relate to what your community is, is important? And what, how does that relate to some of those challenges? So there is a little bit of data education of, you know, about the city. But this, um, and we're not, you know, it's not a full education process right now. Um, but there will be at least trying to get an established baseline and as well.
And then and then my my second question is about the steering committee. Um, right now, our council isn't a part of the steering committee. I've also raised concerns that that I think our steering committee should match the demographics of our city. I'm just wondering, could you give us, our council is usually not part of them. Do you have any, uh, best practices or recommendations that you've seen from the twenty sixteen process? Like cities that that really did that well?
Um, yeah, I would say, yes, ci- city councils are traditionally not a part of the process. One, um, you want, you want to have really good constructive dialogue and a process. Um, one of a variety of people, um, you as involved. Um, they, the way the state rules are actually pretty strict about that, where, um, you know, what it had, you have to have a member of the governing body as a participant and a member of the economic development community, um, as a participant. Um, I'll be happy to come back and give, you know, updated briefings on what we've heard, so you can still be involved, um, as well. We, um, as well, and we're also looking at other ways with the staff to, um, to get some feedback directly from you, um, as well.
And then, and and that that second part, are there, because we have never done this before as a as a council. So, um, you know, in twenty sixteen, we just adopted the Fulton County Plan. Are there, can you just give maybe one or two examples of of cities that that had a process that was was very successful or that their residents felt very satisfied with the results?
Um, yeah, I would say, um, the city of Decatur, um, that where they was a lot of it, um, just discussion and engagement, um, where the residents felt like they were, um, you know, had opportunities to provide some feedback. Um, I would say the one that's really kind of unique was the city of Acworth, up in Northern Cobb County, where we're working with that, working with them a few years ago, where the, a lot of the the feedback and discussion from the residents were like, they were just really wanting to know what was going on, what's going to happen next. Um, and where we, the, talking about the steering committees, we had some pretty long steering committee meetings where we dealt with a lot of different issues and had some really good, um, kind of constructive feedback. You know, one of the, you know, interesting things about bringing, having a steering committee is it brings different perspectives to the conversation, um, and allows us to vet ideas and recommendations before they get into a bigger audience. Um, and then it also allows, you know, those committee members to ask and answer some tough questions, um, about the the city, um, as well.
Awesome. Hey, Mr. Kalid. All right. Well, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Lombard, for an excellent report. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great afternoon.
Next item, please.
Next item is item four, Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, T S P L O S, updated discussion, Mayor Edwards.
I'll be very very brief. I don't want to take a lot of time because we we have another meeting to go to. As you remember, at our last meeting, as we talked about the T S P L O S, we talked about the, uh, uh, three options that we had, be three A, three B, and three C. At that time, we voted on three C, which was a one percent T S P L O S with transit. And it caused for, uh, one thing I did want to tell you that that caused for a tax increase. Since then, uh, the mayor. Since then, uh, the mayors have been having a lot of meetings and, and looks like most of the mayors, uh, most of the citizens opted for three A, which is, uh, the same thing we've been getting without transit. Let me tell you what the thinking are is about that. If you'll remember, and I think that, uh, Ms. Gilya, you remember this, last year when the, we're at the state and the hundred million dollars that was allocated to North Fulton for four hundred was voted on. Uh, and, and at that time, the position of the, of the South Fulton mayor was basically, we're next, okay? Well, of course, that never happened. And so the thinking has been, why should I pay another dime for transit? And you're gonna take that money because it is, is not allocated to cities like, like most things are. You'll take that money and you'll, you'll finish what is happening up north with four hundred. So that's kind, that's kind of the thinking, uh, uh, where they were. Uh, city like, city like Palmetto, who has not had transit for eight months. Uh, now, since the communication has been started, they're gonna do that. So, having said that, moving forward, there was a, since, since it looks like the majority of the cities are saying, we don't want to pay Marty any money. Uh, Liz Hausman, the Fulton County, proposed that I think it was ten percent of the money that we get goes to transportation. And once again, that was struck down by the mayors, uh, as something they did not want. Uh, thirdly, Ms. Gilya, you'll be interested in this also, uh, and all of you would, would, especially, uh, Ms. Willis. Marty is not looking at the issue of, uh, if you'll see there, there's your ten percent what it would cost us if he were to do it. Uh, Marty, Marty is looking at the twenty nine court. Well, here's the good thing, uh, Ms. Willis and Ms. Gilya, that Marty is pushing forward to do a twenty million dollar project out of their funds. As for the, as for the B T, uh, B R T down South Fulton Parkway, Ms. Gilya, people think that that is a future need, uh, that can be addressed, but they think that Highway twenty nine is the, uh, is, is need, a present need that we need to look at.
Right.
So what I'm asking for right now is, we're, we're, we're stuck on three C. It's not gonna really make a matter because I think that all the others have gone to three A.
No, 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 it's three, it's, it's three A. If we agree to three A, seventy-five percent of the mayors will do it. We need sixty percent. So we're, well, even if South Fulton says no, which I hope we don't.
We're there, I got that. That's what I'm saying, but I didn't have the opportunity, Ms. Gilya, because I hadn't spoke to y'all.
Right.
So I had to abstain, okay?
I remember.
So, so what I want to do now is, is, is that if we want to join the other mayors un- under the three A.
Right.
Seventy-five percent, that's what I need to know today. Uh, regardless of what we do, how it comes out, three A is gonna win.
Right.
So I would just like to know what is the consensus? And three A is simply saying, now, if you go three C, there will be a tax. You go with three A, you won't be taxed, and we're gonna do Highway twenty nine on Marty's dime.
Okay, I'm in the queue.
Go ahead, Ms. Gilya.
Um, I, I think that, that it is the, the, the best thing for us to do. And what really bothered me with, um, three C was they changed it from five percent to ten percent. And then further, they only included four hundred in South Fulton Parkway. South Fulton Parkway is a state road. So that, none of that made sense to me, and it probably didn't make sense to the other mayors. And that's why they overwhelmingly chose, um, three A. And so if we can get three A, and we know that we have a lot of streets in subdivisions and minor and corridor and all kinds of streets that, and potholes that, that need to be taken care of and bridges, et cetera, et cetera. And Marty is going to, um, look at twenty nine, which I always believe is an excellent, um, rehab opportunity all the way up from the city of Atlanta down to Noonan. And so to me, that seems to be the best of all worlds.
And let me add, let me add something, Mr. Gilya, just because you choose three A, doesn't mean that you can personally, you can allocate personally, uh, some of those funds to transportation.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, but we also would like to suggest that you, you hold some of those funds in contingency.
Right.
Because you may have to have an issue with maybe a bridge that goes down or something like that. But, uh, I, most people think that we say, oh, we're not gonna do anything, that's not what we're saying. You can do some transportation under three A.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Right. Can I get a consensus of what you all think? You, you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Ms., yes, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to know if there was a benefit to our political alignment by going three A, since you said it's gonna pass anyway.
I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not down for political alignment, all right? Whatever benefit that may be, whether we do three C or not, uh, three A has overcome. Because South Fulton, I mean, the cities of, and South Fulton has the majority of the sixty percent.
And I, I just think that when we all agreed to three C, there's a reason behind it. And it's important that it's amplified, that sometimes our vote for what we want initially should be paramount if it's going to still pass, because it sends a message for the future.
Oh, no.
And, and, and Mr. Baker, I'm not refusing that. Yeah, I'm just trying, I could not say yea or nay, because I had not come back to y'all and let them know what the rest of the cities have. So if you want to stick with three C, it's okay, uh, but three C does, doesn't come.
I, I follow your leadership with it, but I just wanted to know, um, how, how, how that works. I've never said it that time.
Yeah, I understand, sir. So we gotta stay with three C, or we can join the other cities in three A, uh, with no, with no, uh, money to Marty, but yet working with, with Marty on Highway twenty nine and being able to use portion of our funds out of the three C argument to do, uh, transportation.
Um, Mayor, I mean, I assume you're not, I recognize on the queue because you lot took.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I don't have anybody in, maybe it's my cue, I don't know, I was looking at it, but go right ahead.
Um, so, three A, um, the, the, Marty is gonna do a twenty-nine million, a twenty million dollar project on Highway twenty nine, regardless of three, whether we go with three A or not, correct?
Uh, possibly, I can't answer yea or nay.
So you said Marty is in the process of doing a twenty million dollar project. Does that have anything to do with this T-SPOSS?
Well, yes, I think, I think to answer your question as best I can, uh, Councilwoman Willis is, under three C, uh, uh, it doesn't prompt Marty to do anything out of their pockets, because we're gonna be paid for with the sales tax. On the, on the three A, where they're not getting anything, it pushes them to, uh, kind of come to meet us halfway and say, if you, if that's the case, we'll do this in light of the fact that you have not been, you have not been treated fairly in the transportation plan.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, but the only, my only hesitation about not going with three C, if Marty is going to have a twenty-nine million, a twenty million dollar project designated for Highway twenty nine, and we go against three C, basically that cuts, uh, off the, uh, transportation funding opportunity for, um, other parts of the county. And, and when I looked at the meetings, uh, one of the, um, one of the points that the northern commissioners were making is that they pay into Marty, but they have limited services, uh, going up four hundred. And, and, and I can speak to this because I used to work, uh, at a campus, um, going up, uh, four hundred, and the traffic was horrific, and, um, the model services were limited. And, um, I just don't want to, um, go with three A, because yes, we do need services. And we, we have had, um, you know, uh, we have, they, South Fulton does need services, transportation services. But at the same time, we do have model services, and we have more model service than, um, up, uh, four hundred. And so one of the reasons, uh, this, uh, it just, it just seems like three C would, and correct me if I'm wrong, would three C be a win-win for all?
No.
Why not?
What's gonna happen is, you know, once again, we did the three me, the hundred million, I've dealt for four hundred, okay?
Mm-hmm.
It would have been our turn to have, that puts more come to South Fulton. If you vote for three C, you will be taxed. There's no, there's no, uh, guarantee, matter of fact, that the money that you're gonna put into Marty is gonna stay down here, because they're still, they're still having to have additional funds to do things in Georgia four hundred. They feel we, the mayors feel that that money, a great portion of the money that we're gonna be taxed on is gonna go north.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Has, can I, all right, still have the floor. Has Marty been brought into the discussion? Has, have they, have they been asked, uh, how, uh, I mean, ha- has that question been asked?
Absolutely.
And so what was the response? Did they say?
Basically, you know, you know, there's no plan as to how money is gonna be divvied up once you tax it, all right? So they don't have, they can't say anything about that. But, uh, uh, so that's kind of where we are with it.
So what, when?
Marty has communicated, and I've communicated to me and others, that even if we do, see, I understand if we do three C, and they come back with a, a plan, uh, for Roosevelt Highway to some twenty million dollars, and we still can take a portion of our, our, our T-SPOSS money and use on transportation, to me, that's a win-win situation.
And so Marty hasn't come back with a plan, that's the issue. So you're saying that because they have not come back, is it, and when does this have to be approved? I know this has, this is time sensitive.
Uh, you know, we got, we got a meeting coming up next week. I mean, but right now, uh, the majority of the people have already said we're gonna go, we're gonna go with the program.
I, I, I understand that, but I do agree with, uh, Mark Baker. I mean, I'm not, I don't really care about the majority. I'm looking at the principle behind it, and I don't want to come across as not being, uh, being insensitive to, you know, the overall picture when it comes to transportation.
And it's not, it's, I'm not here to, 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 to tell you to change your mind. I just couldn't speak for us until I brought everything back, and then I could hear from you all as to what we want to do. We can stick with three, with three C. Ms. Gilya, I think Mr. Kalid was next, go ahead. Mr. Kalid.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gilya, go ahead.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Since they clearly told us that, that sixty percent of the mayors had to agree to whatever it is that we are going to do. And right now, even if we don't do it, we would still have that sixty percent. Then the looming question is, what happens to the other mayors? Some of them said nothing, some of them said no, um. It was really between no and nothing, or some other plan. So then, does that mean that those that said no can do whatever they want to do and they can choose whatever they want to choose?
No, we have to be on, we have to be on one accord, I mean, whatever, everybody's gonna have to deal with.
So night, right now, we got over sixty percent.
Whatever sixty percent is, whatever sixty percent is there, definitely to deal with.
Okay, so that's my point. We got over sixty percent that are saying three A.
And I'm not trying, once again.
And I, and I really think, I think Mayor, excuse me for, for cutting you off. I think the reason why they did is because they want to be in control of how they use transit. I think that's, that was.
Or transit, or transit dollars, there's no guarantee.
Exactly.
How the, how the transit dollars are gonna be used.
Exactly, exactly. And it was because, and it was because they were, they were being forced to spend ten percent for four hundred and ten percent for South Fulton Parkway, and the mayors thought that that was, uh, that was not fair.
In light, in light of the three hundred million dollars they got there.
Exactly.
Right. So what I would like to say is someone would make a motion, we'll stay where we are, or that we would, we would change our, our minds and go with some other thing, that's all I need to know.
So Mayor, are we, are you just doing a consensus? Because I, I know we typically don't vote during work.
We'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Let me do a consensus, uh, starting with District One.
Yes.
Okay, District One, Councilmember Ralph.
Is there a motion?
Well, we're just doing a consensus.
Okay. Well, what is the consensus you are, you asking for, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, I was just gonna go down the line and, and each council member would indicate which.
All right, I'm all right with that.
What is this?
What is this?
Go ahead.
Somebody's information is on the screen.
This, uh, Ms. Caldwell.
What is this?
That's all right, somebody else. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Ralph.
Uh, three C, um, three C with a list of the projects.
All right.
Councilmember Gobs.
So just so I'm clear, three C is the one that we voted on previously, correct?
That's correct.
Which requires a tax increase.
And that's the one with the tax increase?
Right.
But we're going with the majority, well, the majority of the cities are going with three A, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, three A.
Next.
Let me approach it, Willis.
Uh, I want three C contingent upon the list of the projects.
Okay.
Councilmember Gilya.
Three A.
Okay, Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Kalid.
Um, I've always been a proponent of three A, not only because I, like the majority of cities, are circumspect about the allocation of funds.
That is correct.
But we do also, to remind the council again, we do also have a second T-SPOSS coming before us for parks.
Right, so what is your vote, Mr. Kalid? Huh?
Three A.
Of three A, okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker.
I'm torn in following the leadership of the mayor and going with three C with the discretion of the list, so I abstain. I'm sorry, because, because I want, because I want to take a principal vote on what it is that we agreed on unanimously, because we felt that's the best thing. And everybody, we, we know our citizens don't want, we, we know our citizens want that, we, they have demands. And based off these demands, some, I mean, we, we're willing to pay for, to a, to a, to a small extent.
I got you, sir. All right, Nick, who's next?
Co- Councilmember Reeves.
It's Mr. Reeves, are you there?
He, he's in the Zoom, but, uh, he, he's not responsive. Uh, the vote is three for three A and two for three C, one abstention.
Okay, let's move on. That's a consensus vote, too. So let's move on.
Okay, next item is item five, Finance Monthly Report, interim finance manager, Ms. Nina Robinson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council and members of staff and constituents of the city of South Fulton. I'm bringing to you tonight a report of our operations as of the end of March thirty first, twenty twenty one. Before I begin, I just want to give you an idea of some of the things that we have in the pipeline, uh, in our division. We are working on a completion of our fiscal year twenty twenty audit, and there'll be a presentation coming to you at a workshop session later on, not too far in the near future. We're also working on our mid-year budget amendment that will be presented to you very shortly in one of the upcoming meetings. And we're also compiling our FY twenty twenty-two budget projections that will be presented to the city manager very shortly. As we go through tonight's slide, I'll go to the next, next slide, which will detail for you our revenue for the general fund. Mr. Uh, Reed, Mr. Adams, do you have the financial report that you can pull up for us, please? And if you'll go to slide number two, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And I think if you can get rid of those notes, those are not necessary for this meeting. So here we have um the general fund revenues compared to the budget. I added the column that you requested so that we can see our tracking of those revenues compared to the budget. As expected, we have a high uh uh collection rate for the property taxes which are due in October. So we would expect that number to be pretty high in this, within the first six months of the year, and that's exactly what we are experiencing. What you see in franchise fees is a, an unexpected and unanticipated increase in those numbers that was not budgeted for. But you'll see a uh, an adjustment for that in the mid-year budget amendment to increase those revenues. And to use those increased revenues in a contingency uh fund that will be, where we'll determine where we need to use those. Uh, additional revenues that will be determined by council. Local option sales taxes are coming in as expected. Uh, all of these would, you know, if we were trending out flat, we'd expect it to be about fifty percent. Other taxes represent mostly the insurance premium tax, which comes in in one lump sum in October. So of course, that number is uh pretty high at this point in time. We'll get additional funds trickling in over the course of the. The remaining few months of the year, but it, it looks good. Uh, the rest of the numbers, licenses and permits includes business licenses. The business license due date was May, it was March thirty first. We've got new technology in place, which is just slowing our processing down just a tad bit internally. But we do see the funds coming in. It's just an internal um teamwork effort to get all the processing done in a timely manner. So I'll bring forth that information more up to date for you uh very shortly. The rest of the numbers uh speak for themselves and we'll go to the next slide. I added some additional information in here for the future uh reference to kind of explain the different revenue categories. And make it a little bit easier for you to know exactly what is in each revenue category. I'll, I'll plan to expand on this type of information and provide you additional information each year, each month. So that you can get a um uh overall view of operations and accounting, some of those terms that may give people trouble. Or pause or they're unclear. So I hope this information will be useful to you. This is the same report we provide to you each month. It's a, a reconciliation or overview of how our property tax. Uh, revenues are coming in. We see a comparison over the last four years. And we don't expect those numbers to be too badly impacted by COVID. So this year, it's, looks good, but that COVID impact may be something we have to experience next year. Let's keep our fingers crossed that doesn't happen. The next slide, if you go forward, Cory, two more slide, I'm sorry, that's the property tax slide. If you'll go forward to the next slide, it just shows you the revenues by category that support the general fund. Again, you see that the most of the revenue comes from our property taxes. Then from local option sales taxes, the other tax revenue category, which is the tax insurance commission revenue. And then if you'll go to the next slide, I present to you here the expenditures by category. To show you that we are trending pretty well for this time of year. We're six months into the fiscal year now. And some of our expenditures come later in the year. So just because we show a savings in some categories like the city clerk's department, doesn't mean that we don't have things coming through the pipeline. For elections and those type of things. So we are expecting that we'll be well uh attended with the budget. The team is making ever, ever to be conscientious about their spending. And I wanna applaud them for those efforts. The next slide just so shows you a comparison of operating and personnel cost. And the final slide is a statement of revenue and expenditures for all funds, showing you a comparison between the general fund. And all the other funds. The top of the slide shows the revenues for those funds. The bottom shows the offsetting expenditures for those funds. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them now.
Alright, I'm looking at the queue. I don't know what's wrong. I, I don't see anybody, but does anyone have any questions? Oh, there's Mr. Khalid, okay?
Um, the, the, the speed camera money, we talked about it at the last, at the last meeting. What is our current balance now that we paid for the armored vehicle?
What did we pay for? I'm sorry.
What's our current balance of speed camera funds?
Um, I don't have that broken out in this report, but I can, uh, let me see if I can get it before we get off of this call and. Share it with you. How much speed camera revenue have we recognized as of March?
No, that's not what he said. He said less, less the payment, the purchase of the Bearcat.
Okay, the Bearcat, uh, the PO, I believe, was three hundred thousand dollars.
Something like that.
And we've collected about two million in the. In the uh camera revenue. The camera revenue supports general fund operations, so not just for the purchase of the Bearcat.
Right.
Uh, and uh, Mister Adams, may I share my spring, please? Okay, there we go. Uh, I sent this to the members of our council, but for a benefit of those who may not have received the email. As well as you, Ms. Robinson, and our public, I did seek a, there was some conversation about HB nine seventy eight. Which authorized the speed cameras and about whether or not what that two million dollars could be spent. Um, we cannot spend it on any general fund expenditure. It does have to be law enforcement or public safety. But this opinion clearly states from the general council's office of the state legislature who drafted HB nine seventy eight. That that money does not have to be spent exclusively on our police department. That's it, thanks.
I think you made that perfect period at last meeting. However, uh, Mister uh, Mister Hyman.
Yes, Mayor.
There's been some speculation as to what is the definition of public safety. Uh, yeah, this comes, could you expound that a little bit?
Um, within the context of the bill, which was House Bill nine seventy eight. Which has now been codified to be title forty dash six one sixty three. It mentions law enforcement and public safety initiatives. And while putting a sidewalk speed bump, uh, stop sign, traffic lights, or things of that nature. Uh, would enhance or be, you know, safe measure for the public. In the general context of things, those would be transportational items. Normally, when you talk about public safety within the law enforcement community in, in the, in the um section of statute that you find it. You're normally talking about police fine correction or those type of, when you say public safety.
Just wanna make that, you're a pan on that clearly, because that's been brought up twice since we've been here on the meeting. And uh, anyway, any more questions?
Yes, if I could just respond to that, sir.
Right ahead, sir.
I spoke with uh Mister Holcomb, who's one of the drafters of the bill, because I had that same question. So going to the original intent of the drafters themselves, uh, he saw no problem with pedestrian safety. Being a part of um, public safety. And went on to say, when I saw further legal opinion from the uh, general council's office. Was that public safety will be defined as that we as a city will define what public safety is.
Absolutely.
Even though it might generally be thought of as something, but we as a city council can actually make that decision ourselves.
I find it to be very challenging that uh, when we have general council opinion. That match our opinions, then uh, we wanna stick with that. But I can show you over the years where general council opinions have come across this board, this, this, this council. And we have shot it down. So I just think in, in, in the meantime, we will, we will figure all of this out and get the definition that we need to move forward.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, may I speak?
Go ahead.
So as you stated, the general council opinions are opinions that are rendered um to state legislators. And I don't think the intention was for general council's legal opinion from a legislator to end up. Uh, in someone's newsletter and be shared all over the community. I'm, I'm almost positive. Uh, we have a city attorney that has advised us. And what was also said at the last council meeting, no one negated that uh, the revenue could not be used. Outside of police. What was said is that the revenue had to be used for public safety initiatives. And uh, the crosswalks were considered more of transportation projects, not public safety initiatives. And so essentially, the uh, general assembly council pretty much confirmed what was already said. And basically, that's what the police chief said and Attorney Hyman said. Thank you.
I wanna move on, we're getting close to that time, and uh, uh, call the next item, Mr. clerk.
Next item is city attorney monthly report.
That will be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Next item.
And the next item is city manager monthly report.
Thank you, Mister Adams. Good evening, Mayor and council and citizens of the city of South Fulton, Tammy Sattler Jones, your city manager. Um, I have a few items I wanted to share with you. Uh, just wanted to give an update regarding our twenty twenty one spring cleanup event. Um, the event um was very successful. It actually, uh, we think ended up being one of the largest. Uh, participation uh, to date. Um, as you know, the purpose of the event is to promote recycling of materials no longer needed by South Fulton residents. And to prevent illegal dumping. Uh, for the second year in a row, the event was offered at two locations within our city. Um, the um Merk Mile location, um, over six hundred and seventy seven households were served. Creole Park, four hundred and twelve households were served. And curbside recycling, which we offered to our seniors who were over sixty five. Uh, we had two hundred and eighty individuals uh that had their curbside collections picked up. Uh, we collected over a hundred and thirty two tons of materials, which included one hundred tons of municipal solid waste. Uh, recycled materials in numbers include eight tons of metal, nine tons of paper from paper shredding. Twelve tons of paint and approximately three tons of tires. Um, as part of the spring event, the city, um, we, you know, wanted to celebrate um our single-use plastic ordinance. And we distributed nearly four hundred reusable shopping bags. Uh, we would also like to especially thank our um sponsors, the Jacobs team. GFL, Reliable Sanitation, T and R Sanitation, and Waste Pro. So we also wanna thank our public work staff, communications, all of our staff were in, who were involved in helping to make this event a success. Um, our um city hall reopening, as far as our employees, we are not yet open yet to the public. However, we are uh having our employees return back to city hall as the numbers of COVID nineteen take, cases continue to decline. And with the availability of vaccines, um, as of April the fifth, our city um staff have begun transitioning back to city hall. And our other city facilities. Um, we've implemented a number of safety and security uh measures. Um, employees, of course, have to take a daily uh survey before entering city hall. Uh, we have to continue to do social distancing, wearing mask when um, within city hall. Uh, we also have a temperature s- a scanner that is at all of our public and uh employee entrances. Um, we are doing uh appointments. If there is someone with the public that wants to visit with our staff. We are asking those individuals to schedule an appointment and our staff will have to notify our front desk staff. Um, we also have a uh police officer at the front of city hall to assist uh in our security efforts. Um, the other thing I wanted to share with you was there's been some qu- uh questions regarding our CDBG eligibility. Um, we are currently a CDBG eligible um entitlement city. However, um, in the city is in the process of uh completing our uh five-year consolidated plan. Um, and uh multi-year goals. Um, this assessment uh has to do with our housing and community development needs. And analysis of housing and economic development conditions and other available resources. Um, also before uh our consolidated plan is finalized, staff uh must consider, or, or complete rather. A uh citizens' participation plan, uh, which is set forth in the policies and procedures in order for us to. Uh, encourage participation in our South Fulton um consolidated plan process. Um, there was a public hearing done in twenty twenty. Um, and it's my understanding that the second thing that we will need to do, I mean, that, that public hearing was actually on July twenty eighth of twenty twenty. Um, and uh, our uh, another part of that process is that our, uh, we have to do a survey. Um, and we plan to put that survey on our website and push it out on social media. And once we can complete the survey process, it's my understanding that we will be at a point where our. Allocated CDBG funding will be submitted to the city. And that's uh over five hundred thousand dollars that we're going to be expecting to receive. Um, Ms. Robinson, our interim finance director mentioned that we had kicked off our fiscal year twenty twenty two budget process. Um, the staff and I met on uh Monday, March the twenty ninth, to review the process. Uh, the staff on this past uh Monday um were to uh submit their request. Um, those are currently under review. I will be having individual meetings along with the finance team. And our assistant city manager to discuss the requests that we are receiving from our staff. Um, it is also my desire to have uh meetings with the council, if possible, the week of May the tenth. To review budgets and get feedback on the requests that we've received from our departments. And also um, address any uh preliminary questions that you may have. So um, I would ask that you will be on the lookout to receive that information coming from me as we prepare to finalize our budget schedule. And uh, we will also, you know, of course, have public meetings to provide information to the public on our fiscal year twenty twenty two. Budget process. Um, I believe that covers everything. Oh, just one last thing, a, a very uh important issue. That we've gotten a lot of questions on Cascade Road. Um, it's my understanding from our public work staff that the, the contractor. Um, was able to install two sections of what they refer to as a bottomless covert. Uh, there are four more sections to be set today. Um, it's my understanding there's a total of six. And the remaining four sections are en route from Ohio and hopefully should arrive on site tomorrow. Um, we had initially put out that we were hoping to have this project completed and we realized it has been a long, long process. Um, it was supposed to be done this month. I'm now being told that it's probably going to be the end of May. But we want to assure the public that the staff is working with the contractor to get this important project completed. And we have run into some rain delays. However, uh, we are trying to uh make up for. Uh, a, a, a project that has taken a very, very long time. So we would ask the public that you please be patient with us. And we wanna have a safe uh bridge project. And um, if you have any questions for me, I would be glad to take those at this time.
Um, so yes, I'm in the queue.
Mr. Mayor, are you back?
So Cory, who's in the queue?
Let me check and see here. Actually, I don't show anyone in my queue right now.
So no one has questions for Ms. Sattler Jones?
I do, Councilmember.
I do. I just don't know how to be in the queue.
Okay, so hold hold one second. So you have, I have a question. Ca- uh Councilmember Ral has a question and Councilmember Baker has a question. I will um reserve my question um until last. I want to recognize Councilmember Ral at this point. And then um Councilmember Baker, is that all, is that all who's in the queue at this point? Okay, well, I'll go last. Councilmember Ral.
Thank you for the update. Um and this is actually a request, um City Manager Jones. I know things that um was very helpful, not just to the council members, but to the constituents, where the monthly uh city managers report, they had a a wealth of information. Um going forward, is that something you can provide? Because I think a lot of the questions, if people miss means, they can skim those reports and get an update of what's going on with the city.
Yes, ma'am. Um we contin- we do continue to do those reports on a monthly basis, and they are available on our city website. Um and the citizens can go to www.cityofsouthfulton.g a dot g o v.
Okay, so it's not just this page. So we can, it's in the same place that Mr. Donald previously posted.
That is correct, and it's also included in the agenda packet that we uh distribute as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um I recognize uh Councilmember Baker at this time.
That was my question. I just wanted to make sure that uh it was accessible, the city manager's report.
Okay, well, I'll end with my question. Uh Mrs. Sattler Jones, thank you for your report. Um do you have any idea, and maybe I missed this, when the uh the uh rescue funds are going to be expended to our city?
It was my understanding from Mr. Lombard that we should expect to receive those in May.
Okay, I'm I'm saying the American Rescue Funds from uh the American Relief uh Rescue Funds. Are you talking about the CBDG Funds or the?
No, I'm talking about the uh American Rescue Fund. It's my understanding the first half will be distributed to the city by May the tenth.
Okay, and then the budget process uh starts in May as well. Okay.
Well, the, yes, yes. Yeah, we're doing preliminary budget meetings with the staff right now, but uh yes, we'll start those budget meetings in May.
Okay, and the only other thing I will add is that um the report that Councilmember Ral was speaking of, the monthly report that's posted on the website, Mr. Donald typically gave us notification when that report was um posted to the website. So if you can, if it's not too mu- if it's not troublesome, can you please um just have maybe someone out of your office shoot us an email whenever that report is posted and updated?
Absolutely, I can do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood. I'm back. Uh any other further questions? Thank you, Miss Miss Manager. Uh I would ask you all at this time, I know it says uh executive session that we we withhold the exec thing after the next meeting because you've been here for two meetings in a row. And let's take, if it's okay with y'all, let's take a ten-minute break. Is that okay?
Yeah. Man, do we still have another meeting after executive session? We got zoning here, that's right?
No, after zoning, we do executive session, but let's, uh I'm I'm asking that we take a ten-minute break right now. We've been through two meetings. Because it's. Is that okay, if I take a ten-minute break?
Yes.
Can we have fifteen?
Okay, let's take a fifteen-minute break. Let's quit, what time we back?
Fifteen minutes is six twenty-five.
I'll see you back at six twenty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we're ready to go.
Roll call, Mayor William Bill Edwards. Councilmember Catherine Rau.
Present.
Councilmember Carmen Lita Gums.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Helen Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Naima Gil Yard. Councilmember Corey Reeves. Councilmember Khalid.
Present.
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Baker.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
I just can't emotionally close adjourned rather, the council work session.
I move to adjourn the work session for the council work session for May fourteen, twenty twenty one.
Second.
I'm going to move to second in discussion, hearing none. Let's vote, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil Yard. Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker. That was approved. We are adjourned at six twenty seven P M.
Okay, I want to call to order the zoning public hearing Wednesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty one, six P M or a little after six P M.
Mayor.
Six twenty seven, yes.
We are just hearing cases, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question, man. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Let me do the roll call for this meeting.
Okay.
Right.
So roll call for the zoning public hearing. The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Here.
Your Honorable Catherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
Your Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable Naima Gil Yard, District Four. Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Oh, here.
Okay, thank you. The Honorable Councilman McLeed, District Six.
Present.
The Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven. Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum present?
Okay, before I go forward, I think that Mrs. Gums, Councilwoman Gums, has something to say.
So I understand that there are new conditions in regards to the work session, I mean, I guess in regards to the zoning. Can we please get specification on that? And then also too, I understand we're not voting, we're just hearing, but if there, so what's the process once we hear them? It will go on the consent agenda? On the regular meeting?
Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, it's my understanding that they won't go on the consent agenda, they will go on the regular public hearing agenda. It's just the council's discretion whether or not they wish to hear any other information, but it would just be presented for a vote up or down.
Right.
Okay, and then if we have current cases that will be deferred. What, how will we do that? Are we still like, we, I have two cases on this present agenda and we are deferring them, so they wouldn't automatically go onto the regular meeting. So how would that process work? And I apologize for the questions.
When it go in the next special meeting that we have concerning the public hearing, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, if you're, if you're deferring item, if you don't specify when, how long the deferral will be, it will just go to the next zoning public hearing, which will be May, May the eleventh.
So we don't necessarily have to still have the public hearing meeting tonight for this, these two cases that will be deferred or other cases that will be deferred?
Personally, I don't think so. I mean, it'd be like everything else, you just won't have it till the date you specify. We'll just move to that time for public hearing.
Right. So I will, so once we get to those cases, I will let the clerk know that they will be deferred and then we will hear them at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Mayor, Mayor, that's not how it works. May I please speak because I was the maker of the motion for this?
Go ahead.
So today is a work session, so we hear cases. If the cases are going to be deferred, then you are, we have to hear the case. The regular council meetings are used to vote up or down on the cases and comments are made during public comments. If anyone has any further things, anything further to say about the cases that may be on a regular agenda. So if you defer these, if these cases are going to be deferred, then they will be deferred to the next work session to be heard.
That's correct. That's correct. That's what we said.
I didn't, I didn't get that understanding.
That was my understanding. So when we get to the two items of mine tonight, we're going to defer them to the next work session, so we won't have to hear them, is what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah. All right, before we get started, just wanted to let you all know, some of you don't know that Helen Willis is in Savannah with her mother. Who has been ill and she's been there for a while. Our prayers go out for you and for your mother, Helen. And Councilwoman Catherine Rau is also in Ohio because she had a debt to her family, so to vote for you, our prayers are with you, okay? All right, call the first item, please.
First item is Z twenty dash zero zero seven, council to consider a rezoning at Zero Butler Road from R three A to C U P. For the purpose of developing a residential subdivision. This case is located in District Two and it was held at the March ninth zoning public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and to all the residents of South Fulton who are listening tonight. On our first case for your consideration, as we said, is Z twenty zero zero seven. You can just go right to the next slide, please, and go to the next one. This is a rezoning at Zero Butler Road. It's a rezoning from R three A to C U P. This is a subdivision for fifty nine homes. It is in a Clintondale overlay. We have made mandated in the conditions for a five foot stagger and that all regular material requirements are also. They will be in compliance with those. For this case, the petitioner has had extensive public meetings with the community. Several meetings with the council member and has been in consultation with staff their entire time. The density allowance at this site is fifty six units and not fifty nine. And so staff recommendation here is denial due to not being in compliance with the future land use map. Planning Commission recommended approval at their meeting. We can go to the next slide, please. Here's just an aerial map. This parcel is located directly in the center of your screen. We can go to the next slide, please. On this, you'll see the zoning map and future land use map. I will say again, as I've said at every meeting where I've shown the zoning map on the left. There is just a little slight alignment issue in our G I S system, but I assure you the site is zoned on R three A. It is the sort of irregularly shaped square and triangular shape. Parcel right in the center of the screen. And on the right, you'll see the future land use map with just a small bit of the left hand side of the parcel in a more dense local live work area. I can go to the next slide, please. This is an overall sketch of the site. You will see the main entrance off Butler Road. You will all see the emergency access with knockbox at the upper part of the tail end of the cul-de-sac at the top of the screen. The homes are wrapped around and stay out of the creek area in the middle of the screen. We can go to the next slide, please. These are some sample images that were supplied by the petitioner for the, this subdivision of just some examples of the homes that have been proposed. One of the conditions that has been stipulated is three sided brick on these homes, so some of the examples here are not entirely representative. And some of the houses will be actually nicer than the pictures that are shown here. We can go to the next slide, please. There is a concurrent variance with this case. If there's no objection, I could just go right into this as well, since they should be considered at the same time. This is a good concurrent variance is for construction of retaining walls in a buffer area unnecessary due to topography of the site. On the buffer of the creek would only be disturbed for the placement of these walls and then left us green space, so it would be entirely passive. These were reviewed by our engineering department and signed off on due to the necessity of the walls. The site would basically be not economically viable if they weren't there due to the topography of the site. Staff recommendation is denial here only due to its association with the noncompliant land use request and the planning commission recommended the same. And if we go to the next slide, I can show you a picture of where those are at. If you look in the middle of the screen, you will see the stream running through the center of this site. There is one jagged black line at the very left hand border of that creek and buffer area. You will see that as one wall. And then right below it to the right is a much shorter wall for a, a second spot in that buffer area, just for some retention there. And that is the conclusion of the staff report on these two cases.
Okay, I'm opening up the public hearing. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero.
Go ahead.
I'd ask staff to put up my PowerPoint, please.
Corey, do you have that document?
I'm not certain which document.
If I can forward that to you, if you don't have it, otherwise, if Michelle would just share her screen, that could go up as well.
Corey, can you give Michelle the rest of the screen?
Yes, it's open.
Okay. All right, I wasn't exactly prepared for that moment, but give me one second and I will pull it up. Okay. Not sure what happened because my screen was there. Now it's dark. See what happened. Sorry about that. Not exactly sure what just transpired with my screen. We'll try it again. Okay, one last try. And if it doesn't come up this way, I will just proceed otherwise. Okay, great.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, again, Michelle Battle with Battle Law here representing the Polte group. I wanted to kind of reiterate some of the things about this particular project. This project was actually started with phase one and phase two of the Legend Oaks community. Back in two thousand, the Board of Commissioners in Fulton County approved both phase one and two for a hundred and four units. At a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre with minimum heated floor areas of eighteen hundred square feet for the units. For the facades, the exteriors were to be consistent with the minimum of three sides of either brick, stone, masonry, wood shake or clapboard siding. Where wood and shake and clapboard were used as primary facades on the front and sides. The exposed foundations were to be covered in a veneer of brick or stone. The property itself, if we look at this map, this is phase one and there were thirty four lots. That were developed on phase one, which means that there are sixty nine lots that are left over from the original rezoning application to be developed. We are now looking at a slide concerning the total numbers approved. So again, we had a hundred and four units, which means phase one, which currently has thirty four units. Phase two now has sixty nine units remaining that could be developed. There was a eighteen hundred square foot, again, minimum heated area with those three sided brick, stone, stucco, wood shake or clapboard siding. What we are proposing now is a total for the entire project of ninety three units. That being thirty four units being built in phase one and fifty nine units being built in phase two. We have increased the heated floor area to two thousand six hundred and twenty two with a minimum floor area. And we are doing three sided brick with either a hardy plank rear or a brick rear at the choice of the homeowner. When we look at the density calculation, I dispute what staff is saying because twenty three point eighty one acres, when we're just looking at the parceling. Under consideration here, that at two units per acre, the max number would be forty seven point sixty two units. Now, mind you, that is the portion of the property that is in the low, sorry, the rural neighborhood district, which no, only allows two units per acre. But our site is a total of twenty seven point ninety eight acres and four point seventeen of those acres is in the local live work district, which is five units per acre max. Or a total of twenty point eighty five units. So if you look, the total number of units that would be allowed on this property. In pursuant to both land use categories would be sixty eight point forty seven units. Mind you that this basically is equal to the total number of units that's left over on this site, when I previously stated, was sixty nine units. So we are not exceeding what the original plan was that was approved by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. And where you see this on this map here is that here's the live work unit and a portion of our property right here is within the. Live work, local live work, which again allows up to five units per acre and the balance is in the rural neighborhood community. When we look at the site plan, as staff has already indicated, we have a total of fifty nine units that are proposed. We've got the concurrent variance that we're asking for, for the installation of the retaining wall. In the areas shown, which is necessitated by the topography and slope of the land and has already been reviewed and noted as necessary by staff. We are proposing the following conditions, which includes being developed pursuant to the site plan for the fifty nine units. We've got all of our land development requirements here with regards to the fifty foot under stir buffer that will be maintained along the north and eastern boundary lines of the property. No more than one entrance on Butler Road. No lot shall be allowed direct entrance from Butler Road. Each unit will have a two car garage. We are agreeing to the three sided brick. All buffers and recreational areas and others that are not part of the platted lot shall be owned by a mandatory homeowners association. There will be a subdivision monument sign located off Butler Road. We have had extensive discussions and negotiations with. The Legend Oaks community and have actually entered into a development agreement with that community and part of that was an agreement on the types of homes. There were specific floor plans that we approved, that being Hampton, the Mitchell, the Pennington, the Furman and the Woodward, which we've attached to the conditions. Additionally, there will be upgrades allowed for sunroom, sitting rooms, which would also allow for the increase in the square footage of the homes. We'll be having a decel lane and left turn lane that will be required in connection with the development of the project. We also agree to an eight foot high black commercial grade aluminum fence that will be installed between Legend Oaks and Briar, Briar Creek. As well as going down the side adjacent to an adjacent property owner. Where we will have also a chain link fence that will be on the interior of the fifty foot buffer. So that she will see trees and will not actually see the fence, but she wanted the fence there in order to protect herself from cut through traffic and the like coming through. Also, there will be a twenty foot emergency access between Briar Creek and Legend Oaks that will be installed. This is a typical layout. We do have the stagger, but it should be noted that we would need the stagger to be between two to five feet. Because of some of the lots on the backside where the retaining wall area would be. We cannot push those back five feet. That would leave those property owners with very little rear yard, which would not be fair to those individuals. With regards to the layouts, we do have the homes here with the proposed square footages and the anticipated sales price. All the sales prices are, and now that we actually, this was before we agreed to the three sided brick product. And so with that, we are looking at all sales prices being roughly three hundred and fifty and above. And these are the different layouts again that, and house styles that were agreed to with the Legend Oaks community. Again, this being phase two. Once again, just to point out, we are. Um, once again, just to point out, um, we are abiding by the uh stream buffer. We are simply asking for the ability to install the um retaining wall within the buffer. As you can see on these lots here towards the back, um, there's um some fall there. And um, that's the issue with the stagger on this side is really pertaining to the lots here. Um, and that is my um presentation. I'd like to note that we have had a significant uh number of folks who have um turned in um letters of uh approval. With regard or recommendations of approval of this application, we've worked hard to address all of the issues. We are um certainly not happy that staff is recommended denial um based on the land use. But is for the reasons I have indicated, we believe that the fifty-nine units um is um not only consistent with the overall. Um, land use, but also uh is consistent with what was originally contemplated back in two thousand. Um, when this project was originally approved, we are simply asking for a modification to allow a different design. And to um address some of the topography and other issues that have arisen since two thousand. Um, so I'm more than happy to uh answer any questions that you may have and um will um just be present for any rebuttal. Thank you.
Mister, Mister Craig, do we have any time left on that side?
Uh, there, yeah, well, there's thirty-two seconds for those in support and I don't have any uh comments. In support of the project.
Uh, any against?
Yes, we have two speakers who uh submitted comments, well, actually, three speakers who have s- submitted comments in. In opposition, uh, Mrs. Gloria Williams and Mrs. Sonya Patterson, who are both uh in the call, I believe.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Patterson, everyone.
This is Mrs. Patterson, I'm I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Greetings to everyone, um, I um just want to say thank you for the moment um to the Honorable Mayor and to the C- City Council and everyone present. Um, I am happy to see that there was a modification that was made um to this project. However, um, with regard to increasing the price points um and um the facade to match with the ordinance. However, I am a resident that lives very close to that, this area where the um property will be uh proposed and extended. And that area is already very, very congested um during the morning time, peak times. So I'm very, I I don't know how much faith I have in the travel um analysis that was done. That appeared to be with the file because it seemed to be very conservative and, you know, no problems noted. But for any of us who get stuck at that four-way stop sign at Stonewall, Tell and Buttonah Road. And you're trying to make that left to head on into, you know, um Enon, it is already a nightmare. So my comment is not so much against that subdivision, although, you know, I think we need to slow some things down. Because we need to get the infrastructure ready to support this. I know there was discussion of a roundabout to address that, but what are we gonna do with these roads? Because whether you're going up Cascade Palmetto, you know, toward ninety-two or toward Campbellton Road, it's a mess. If you're on Buttonah Road and you're going west, uh, you know, to go to West Stubbs, I mean, to go up towards Camp Creek or to go to ninety-two, it's a mess. If you go over to De Mooney, it's a mess and we're just putting more and more subdivisions. There's like three different projects in this area, one in the corner of West Stubbs and ninety uh Cascade Palmetto. One here and then another one at the corner of West Stub and Buttonah. And it's, you know, we're 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 throwing all this density in here and, you know, respectfully, I just want to know how we're gonna get anywhere. You just try to run out to go to Publix in the middle of the day and you're you're stuck. And we've got all these school zones in the middle of all of this. So my my issues are to deny, you know, because you, we need to, we need to put the cart behind the horses and understand. Well, how is this gonna impact the people that already live here? And I live in that area proper and I just would like us to say. Can we plan something about, you know, getting these roads together to support all this development? You know, can we talk about that? Can we put that on the discussion table? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patterson, Ms. Williams, are you there? Ms. Williams, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so I have been against this um project um from the beginning. The main reason why I'm against this project is that we are, if approving this project. If the City Council approves this project, we are missing a fabulous opportunity. This district and this, and specifically this area has some of the highest-priced residential property. In the city of South Fulton. Districts one, two, three, and four have the higher-priced homes in the city of South Fulton. And yet, we continue to allow lower-priced, smaller. Homes to be built and new construction projects in this area. And what it's done is it's devastating to the home values of the legacy. Or the existing homeowners in that area. And some accompanied with the stature of Polte, while we would welcome their participation in the development of the city of South Fulton. We would expect them to be a bit more deliberate in terms of how they're maximizing. The opportunity and building homes that are needed. Homes that would in fact have a more positive impact on property values, homes that are priced five hundred thousand dollars and up. And there's a need for it and it would be more responsive in terms of how it impacts the existing homes. And Les Jardan, some of the homes in West, in um Walden Park, particularly the estates at Walden Park. Gates of Stone Lake, Hampton Oaks, all of those premium surrounding communities need more homes, more homes to be built. Priced higher than what they paid for their homes, higher, definitely higher than the existing value of their homes. And that that's not happening. In essence, we need more diversity in residential development. And I keep saying that if the people in those communities sold their homes and wanted to buy new homes, what would they buy? And also, how are you gonna attract middle and upper-management residents to the city of South Fulton and entrepreneurs? Because you don't have enough of a variety of homes here to to attract them. And so, that reason, I I definitely am against this project.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Williams, uh, is there a third person, Mr. uh Clerk?
Yes, I have a uh, a comment that was submitted by uh Deanna Raspous. Uh, who was represented by Emily Macheski Preston, her attorney at Coleman and Tally.
Yeah.
Uh, she states, the property directly adjacent to. Located in Z twenty zero zero seven and CV twenty zero zero two, zero Buttonah Road called Briar Creek Subdivision. In the event. You approve the rezoning, we respectfully request that you specifically incorporate the conditions into your motion. Including the fence along my client's property line as proposed during the last hearing. Furthermore, we ask that the conditions be attached to the ordinance or resolution for this hearing. Furthermore, we ask that the, oh, because it's here. And she states, oh, they pleaded the same sentence, uh. When making the vote, we respectfully request that you identify the conditions subject to the subdivision. Thank you for your time tonight, that completes the uh public comments.
Okay, I'm opposed to public hearing, uh, Ms. Gilliard.
I um, I noticed that the staff um. Is denying, is denying the request because it exceeds the land use. And it it does buy according to them by three homes, but still, um, it does not agree with the land use. And in addition to that, um. The um Planning Commission um denied the uh buffer. Cause the buffer is not supposed to be disturbed and the retaining wall would disturb it. And that is the state requirement. And so, um, based on those two denials. Um, I I think it's unfortunate because I know that, that, that they've waited a long time to move this project along. But based on those um two, um. Those two denials and one of them, the one I believe it's about the buffer is considered a hardship. Well, it would also be a hardship for the um, the homeowners. And and the whole area for that buffer to be disturbed because it's not supposed to be. And so, um, I have a, a problem with sort of minimizing it. I think it's a big deal and I have a concern about that. I just want to share that.
Mister Mayor, am I in the queue because I I was in the queue from the very beginning?
Well, I only have Ms. Gilliard, so I mean, it's technical, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so of course, um, Mayor and and Council, this is my district. And I appreciate Councilwoman Gilliard's involvement and concern about everything that she stated. But we have worked essentially on this project since twenty nineteen. And we have historically gone with what the council has decided and with community input. We have an overwhelming response of sixty-plus residents who are in support of this project being right in their backyard. So for me, and it's only three houses, we have worked considerably hard with the staff as well. They have had numerous community meetings, we have three-sided brick that is coming to this. It is a very nice product that we have worked extremely hard to get. Unfortunately, we have s- we have tried to get Polte to bring a John Wheelan product over to this location and it's not happening. Now, as far as the traffic, it is also mentioned in the conditions that no lot will have access to Buttonah Road. So it's also for me, I think that, you know, respectfully, as council members and being in, you know, districts. Aligning, I am very flexible with working with people. But this and my residents have reached out to Councilwoman Gilliard, even saying and sharing that their support. So I am asking that we move forward and that the conditions that have been stated have been agreed. As well as a community benefits agreement that has been legally drawn up in regards to Legends Oaks. So, um, I just respectfully ask that, you know, we support this project, three homes. And even after speaking with staff, even though it does exceed the uh, the land use plan by three homes. They are not opposed because we did actually put it down to almost six, eh, from sixty-three. Mayor.
Uh, are you finished, Miss uh Gums?
Yes, and then also too, just to kind of talk about the infrastructure as well. And what our residents need to be reminded is that a lot of this predates us. And in order for us to make sure that we get a quality product, because actually, Polte can walk away and say, we'll do whatever or sell it to anyone else. If we have the opportunity to shape what our product will look like and to make sure that we're able to get quality residents in those homes. Then that should be what the city is trying to do, instead of just leaving it and then allowing for anyone to come in. And we may not have that same opportunity to uh express our concerns and what we would like to see at that location.
Ms. Williams, did you uh, did you try to get into the queue too? Okay, well, I don't know what's going on, but anyway, go right ahead.
So I would like to say that this community is closest to my district, I mean, literally across the street. And um, I will uh, uh, commend Councilmember Gums because she has taken a lot of uh heat. And this has been a very controversial project and she has worked with the community to try to come to su- come some consensus over a year now. And we know that the comprehensive um land use, uh, the the comprehensive development plan that we currently have adopt was. Um, was was put together under the guise of Fulton County. And that land use plan is really not reflective of our current community, hence why we are going through the process again. So to uh make a decision totally on what's in that comprehensive development plan. That's not reflective of our current community, um, I I just don't, I I'm not gonna one hundred percent agree with that. Um, she has worked with the community and if she has a consensus of over sixty community members. Who are in um agreement with this project, then I don't have a problem with supporting it. Because all I ask when it comes to development in this city is that we be more uh. Community and more residential uh friendly versus developer-friendly. And then I also ask that there's a win-win for both parts, the residents and the developer. And so, I I I would say that in this instance, we can't make everyone happy. And for us to just get two uh residents to uh oppose this. And then Councilmember Gums is saying she has over sixty residents who are, who have come to some type of agreement and consensus. I mean, I have no reason to not support this project going forward.
Okay, Ms. Gums? Um, Ms. Gums?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would, I, two things I would like to say to you, and one being that uh. I'm very concerned about when I use the word stagger setbacks, I'm talking about five people in front, alright, it's kind of universal. Second thing is that I would implore you that uh if you have a community benefit, a community benefits agreement. That when it, at what time, and so, with such time as you make a recommendation to approve this, that you spread that agreement on the means.
Yes, sir, we we talked about that, so at the next meeting, we'll share that.
Alright, okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is item three, Z twenty dash zero zero eight. Council to consider rezoning from AG one agriculture to CUP commu- Community Unit Plan. For property located at seventy-one ninety-five Buttonah, zero West Stubbs and thirty-three fifteen West Stubbs Road. This is located in District Two.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Staff.
These are the two, these are the two items that we were asking to defer until our work session in May.
Yes, Councilmember Gums, this is Nathan, I'm, uh, this would be Z twenty oh eight, Z twenty oh nine. And there's a concurrent variance associated with this and that is CV twenty oh oh one, so it would be all three uh to the next uh public hearing.
Yeah.
You so eight, seven, eight, and nine?
Eight, nine, and one.
Eight, eight, nine, and one.
Yes, sir.
So that you, you wanna hold those to our, to our.
Next work session in May.
In May, right?
And two, and two as well.
And two, is that, is that yours, Miss, Mrs. uh? Why are you wanting to choose?
Sir, sir, uh, two was for the first case oh seven.
Okay, let me see.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were holding, so you're not holding oh, oh seven, oh seven is, is um, we're just moving on. But um, oh seven is not held and neither is oh two, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright.
Take me through right now, slowly, what you're holding to the next meeting.
It would be Z twenty oh oh eight.
Just give me the number.
Uh, oh eight, oh nine, and oh one.
Okay.
Four eight, oh nine, oh one, okay, so we're gonna hold those uh to the next meeting, the next meeting, square, Mr. Clerk.
Next zoning public hearing is May eleventh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, next item, Mr. Clerk.
So next item would be item six on the agenda, M twenty-one dash zero zero four. Council to consider a modification at zero Campbellton Road to allow for the construction of apartment complex with commercial out parcels. And this is located in District One.
Yeah.
Yes, as the clerk said, uh, this is a modification at zero Campbellton Road. Um, this is across the street from the new public shopping center. Uh, the current conditions on the site, you can go to the next slide, there you go. The current conditions on the site call for another uh supermarket with fuel center. And so the position here is asking to modify those conditions uh to have a group, to have, I'm sorry, a um apartment complex. Um, and commercial out parcels. Um, so let's, as as you see on this, the slide here, the total is three hundred residential units and seven commercial parcels. Now, staff recommendation here is for approval of this, we can go to the next slide, please. Um, so you see in the very center of the screen, that is an old um aerial, but that is the construction of the public shopping center. So immediately to its left would be the area for this proposed um apartment complex and um commercial center. Let me go to the next slide. Here's the zoning and future land use map for the area, um, it is the highlighted parcel on the zoning map on the right, zone mix. Um, you can see over on the left, it is in compliance uh and with our future land use for the area, you can go to the next slide, please. Um, here's an overall aerial of the site, you will see the apartment buildings are called out on this plan. To the upper right, um, that is one area for commercial buildings and then to. And then to the center and lower left are other areas for commercial out parcels. The triangular shaped parcel on the right is property not owned by this development at all. Uh, you'll see Campbellton Road um to the bottom of the screen. Um, and again, to the right of this development is the new public shopping center. Uh, we can go to the next slide, please. Here's an overall aerial view, uh, including uh where the commercial out parcels would be. So all the red is the apartment complexes and different buildings and the amenity area in the center of the screen. And you have seven out parcels shown on uh this map right here. Uh, we can go to the next slide, please. Here's a rendering of the proposed apartment buildings. Um, these are in compliance with the overlay district. And they would all be three stories. You can go to the next slide. I believe that is the um, yeah, clubhouse right here. And I believe this is the last picture in this. There is a concurrent variance going with this case, which is CB twenty-one oh oh two. You can go to the next slide, please. Um, this is a variance for the number of parking spaces. So they're proposing four hundred and eighty-five spaces uh for this, uh, which is basically one per one bedroom. Um, one for each two bedroom, I'm sorry, my screen's a little cut off here, so I'm missing, missing that information. Um, one per one bedroom, two per two bedroom, and three bedroom, and then five for the leasing office. Um, the number of trips generated by a residential site. Which this would be is significantly less than would be generated by the previously allowed supermarket. So they don't need quite as many parking spaces as is previously allowed. Each of the commercial parcels will have their own parking, so the parking variance is just for the um. Residential buildings. And I don't believe there's another picture in this. If there is, it would just be the same site plan. No, that was the. And so that is the end of the presentation for those cases.
Okay, um, Ms. Willis, you're up. Ms. Willis? Are you ready? You're up.
Mr. Mayor, we had the public hearing you have to do as well.
No, I'm okay, Mayor. I don't, I don't know what happened.
Saying, okay, uh, then let me open, let me open the pro for public hearing. Uh, those who are for, Mr. Clerk, how many do you have?
Uh, for M twenty-one dash zero zero four, I have uh Mrs. Gloria Williams. And Mrs. Sonya Patterson, who I believe are both in the uh meeting.
Ms. Williams, or Ms. Patterson, you ready? Ms. Patterson or Ms. Williams?
Hello, Mayor.
Yes.
And City Council, this is Gloria Williams.
Oh, hey, Ms. Williams.
And um, again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak and address uh you and the City Council. Uh, I'm against this development. Number one, it backs up to warehouses. And you're you're putting residents, you you're mixing residential with warehouse. And and I have a problem with that. Uh, I have a problem with that because instead of just going along. With what developers want, there needs to be more strategy and deliberate thought to what is best for the community. The community does need more diversity in retail, more retail, more dining. That would be better suited in that area than multifamily housing. Uh, also, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be more of a benefit to our tax base than multifamily housing in that area.
Okay. There, Ms. Williams?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you for 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 being here. Uh, I think Ms. Patterson, I think is next.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you again. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, um, Honorable Ma- Mayor and Council members and all present. Um, I I have to echo those sentiments as well. Um, I am more into the planning and and understanding, like, what do we want to see? As opposed to developer number A comes up, says this is what they want to do, and we we say yes, we say no, we say yes, we say. What do we want to see? And I think that um as we try to get more people involved with go- what's going on with our communities, um respectfully. We do want to see more variety in our eating options, our um, you know, even parks. I mean, you know, what, I attended a few meetings uh last year about parks and recreation. Um, you know, there was some talk about, you know, trying to expand on that, walking trails, places to go for our little dogs to play. I mean, it just can't be, you know, concentrated res- you know, residents, 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 residents. And so I would also sit, ask that you consider, you know, passing on this as well. Um, because we do want to increase a different type of development, and that development that attract more of the businesses. And more of the residents that we want to see in that area.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patterson. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody uh for?
Yeah, the applicant, the applicant is on the line.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Larry Dingle, and and I'm representing Carter in this effort. And we have uh with us Jerome Hagley and Adam Parker. And I'm gonna turn it over to them to go over the details of this project. But before that, I'd like to remind everyone that we have worked very long and hard in trying to build consensus around this issue. Uh, long before we filed our zoning application, we began meeting with the Sound Sandtown Neighborhood Association. To hear them out, meeting with staff, to hear them out. And we made serious uh changes and significant changes to our plan in response to what we've heard. I also want to remind everybody that this is a node that has been under study for quite some time. What we are proposing here is not radical, not substantially inconsistent with what we believe to be good planning. For uh the Sandtown community. With that, I'm gonna let Jerome and Adam um take it up.
Uh, thank you, Larry. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Parker for Carter. We are a sixty-three year old real estate development and investment firm headquartered right down the street in Atlanta. And we are the developer that is proposing this project that's requesting this modification. And as Larry mentioned, I would like to take a few minutes to talk about the public outreach that occurred. As well as in just in general being in support of this application. Uh, this, what you're seeing tonight is the result of months of collaboration and conversations with planning staff. Elected officials and and residents. So we first met with representatives from the city about this project last summer. And this was originally proposed as a purely multifamily project. But after meeting with and listening to planners and elected officials and neighbors. We have altered our plans to what you see before you tonight, which is a mixed-use project. It has a multifamily component, it has a commercial component, it also has a public park component. As we heard, that was one of the things that the city and neighbors were looking for. And with all of that, um, the dialogue has not stopped. We're continuing to have resident discussions. We were on a Zoom as recently as last night, answering questions about the project. We have made ourselves available and will continue to do so throughout the project. So um, thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, we're excited about this opportunity. And we look forward to future collaboration to deliver a project that the residents of South Fulton, the city uh and Carter can be proud of. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Dingle?
Uh, Jerome, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Larry, and uh um, I'm I'm trying to dial in, I've had very bad uh bad connection. But I I wanted to echo what my partner, um, Adam said about the uh about the process. And, you know, we are a sixty-three year old company, and we do believe in quality community development. Um, we want to be a stakeholder here in the city of South Fulton. And we are here and able to uh answer any questions uh that you might have. Um, but, you know, as Adam mentioned, we have been working, we've gone through several different site plans, uh modifications. Uh, to incorporate um and uh the horizontal mixed-use nature of this project. Based on the feedback that we've gotten from the Sandtown community, as well as other neighborhood communities around this development. And um, and we're I, we're able to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? If not, I'll close the uh the public hearing, and I'm looking at Ms. Gilliard in the queue, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Mayor.
Wow, are you in there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. No, let me get Ms. Gilliard, she's in the one I see. I'll get you next, Ms. Rob.
Okay.
Um, I just, um, I want to preface what I'm gonna say about the project with this. I I know that my colleagues work very, very hard um in their districts. And so when I have a concern, it's not that I'm like dissing the community or them. I'm just sharing that I'm I'm reading and hearing something and talking about it and concerned wh- when I see it. And I have a concern about this one particularly because it's from back in two thousand and sixteen. Right before we became a city, and um Fulton County um really. They, at that time, a a warehouse was being proposed that eventually went on Fulton Industrial. But my my biggest concern with the project is that. A, it is too close to warehouses and to Fulton Industrial. And there could be a better use of the land, and I I don't know what that might be. But I'm just thinking about that because I know, I looked at it very carefully. And I see that the back of the homes is across the street from Fassanel, which is an industrial distributor. And I'm not sure whether or not on the other side, there will ever be. Cause I know Town Homes was originally proposed, and Fulton County kicked that out. Because it's full of truck, Riverside Drive is full of truck traffic. And so um, I'm just concerned, I'm not saying that it's good, bad, or whatever. I'm I'm just expressing that I am concerned about it, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Gilliard. Uh, Ms. Rob, go right ahead.
Uh, yes, I really want to echo that there has uh been quite a bit of discussion. Working with Sandtown uh Community Association since, I think, we started, like you said, you started in summer. But since September, we pretty much had ongoing conversation. And one of the things that um as recent as last, I I do support the project. And that, uh, for clarification, Councilwoman Gilliard, the town home community is still zoned for that and still scheduled to proceed. Um, but uh one thing we will be uh looking at is getting additional community input. On the layout uh of the commercial. But uh to take into consideration is a joint meeting that me and Councilwoman uh Gums had with residents. Cause of course, this is a butt District Two. And um, so other than that, I think we really tried to work through the issues. And Carter's committed to ongoing uh dialogue with the residents. So this is really just changing the down zoning at this point from the um grocery store and gas station. Which people need to understand that was approved for the county. Somebody could come in and proceed with that without ever coming before us. And I know, uh, again, there's been a lot of concern about uh gas stations, and we don't want another grocery store right next to one that's already there. So um, that's all I'm gonna say about that. And I'm looking forward to the continued conversation with Carter about uh the commercial.
Anyone else? Okay, but let me just say this. Uh, Carter, sixty-three year old, doing business. And I I just want to say to you is I didn't see a uh elevation on the commercial end. I myself personally are pretty sick and tired of seeing these little boxes, the short boxes coming up. And then we we probably, we call it that commercial. I think the commercial area should have as much character as the uh residential part you put in, so.
We have it, we have.
Okay, having said that.
Please.
As we go forward with me, excuse me, as we go forward, when you show me renderings of buildings. I would say to you that I would like to see mu- as much character on the inside. Than I do on the outside, especially when you're talking about uh apartments. So as we talk about this again, if you could provide for me, uh, what would the interior of those apartments look like? Alright.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, it's Larry Dingle. We can certainly do that, and we'll do that for you tomorrow, by tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be good. And I think Ms. Rob said you had some.
Yes, it's already available. I think for the benefit of the public, for people who have not been involved. I know we should have the slides available because they've been available for a long time to show their commercial.
Yes, Councilmember Rob, I have pictures I can pull up right now if I go on my screen.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Caldwell, you'll have to uh to lower the uh current presentation if he wants to show, thank you.
Alright, great. So, Mr. Mayor, in response to your question of the interior of the multifamily product. What you're looking at right now are interiors of previous developments that we have completed. So these are not just hypothetical photos, these are photos of products that we have developed in the past.
Is that, is that the clubhouse presentation here?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything on the inside of a, of a unit?
Um, inside of a unit, let me pull through this presentation.
Adam, that, 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 they're, Adam, they're, they're on that, they're on that slide, the right.
Oh, yeah, um, there you go.
Oh, I see it, I see it now. Okay.
Right.
Well, matter of fact, I think I, Catherine, you showed me this, didn't you?
Right.
I think you did, okay. I remember now.
So what, what you're, what, what you're looking at here, Mr. Mayor, in the top right portion of the picture of of the slide. Is the uh, of the interiors of of the units. What you'll see are forty-two inch ki- kitchen cabinets, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, plank wood flooring. And then the uh, the pictures below are 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 rent, are actual photos of developments. That we have just recently completed that are the same character of the type of interior finish that we will have in our club room. And in common area spaces.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't remember, uh, but but Councilwoman Rob did show me this, right, okay?
Please show the commercial.
Oh, okay. Jerome, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, sure. So what 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 you're looking at is is just just kind of examples of the type of 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 commercial buildings. That we would, we would propose on the commercial out parcels. And and these buildings can contain various types of 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 commercial uses from from banks to restaurants. Um, to other commercial spaces. Um, but the character of what we're trying to demonstrate here are the are the materials and the types of 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 building materials. That we would uh propose for these um, uh, for these commercial parcels. Along with the same type of uh of landscaping that we saw in the in the earlier photos, along with the with the residential. To create kind of a a pedestrian-friendly, horizontal mixed-use development. That will be connected with a new road uh along um Campbellton connecting to Riverside. That ties in with a pedestrian connection to the the new Publix Grocery Store. Uh, this new road would have um sidewalks on both sides and street lights and so forth. That would uh connect the 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 two commercial um out parcels.
I got you. Yes, thank you very much. Alright, any other questions from anybody? Next item, please.
Mayor, I was in the queue, I sent you a text as well. I'm not really sure what's going on with this queue.
I see, okay, Ms. Willis, go right here.
Um, I I I just want to make a comment. Um, I I really, we're gonna have some fallout because of um. Of what was adopted when we came over, um, when we created the city and adoption of of Fulton County. Some things we are going to be bound by law to do. And for me, the most important thing is community input. And so I'm not going to vote up or down on a decision based on one or two comments. I mean, if you have residents who overwhelmingly uh oppose some of these decisions, that weighs in. But if I'm not getting, in which I am not getting residents overwhelmingly opposing some of the development that's coming into our city. And there has been a concerted effort to get community input, then I have no reason to hold anything up. And that's just where I am. Um, and so I would just encourage my colleagues, you know, to make sure that they're getting community input. And all of these developments that's coming to our city are, um, there's a win-win for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willis. Anyone else? Mr. Clerk, next item.
Okay, that uh, that was M twenty-one dash zero zero four, and that was the accompanying concurrent variant, CV twenty-one zero zero two as well. Right, uh.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then next is item eight, M twenty one dash zero zero three. Counsel to consider a modification at Zero Boat Rock Road rear for the purpose of constructing senior apartments, District One.
Yes, uh, thank you very much. This one also has concurrent variance as well. We can go right to the next slide. As the, the petition here is asking for two variances, um, with several, or I'm sorry, two modifications and several concurrent variances. Um, they have been in discussion with the council member, but they've uh specifically requested a deferral until our next um council public hearing uh to refine the proposal. There are several edits that they do need to make to that plan, which they are aware of. And they do need to do more community outreach, outreach for their, which they are aware of as well. Um, so they have requested it, and staff is uh recommending approval of their uh refer, deferral request.
Okay, Mister Clerk, you have to refer that to the next meeting.
May eleventh.
May eleventh.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else? Yes, the C V twenty one zero zero one was accompanying that project, so there are no other items except for executive session. Before we leave, yeah, I want to say one other thing, that is, uh, to staff. A five-foot step set, setback is a five-foot setback. And in my career in zoning, a five-foot setback is actually from the front of the yard because it doesn't create a sense of row houses. So I just want to make sure that you understand, when I say five-foot setback, that's what I'll be looking at.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, I have a point of, uh, this is, this time a point of order. There's been several defers, deferrals while the council is well within its authority due to deferrals. I think from a proper departmentary procedure that at least there should be a motion and seconded for those to be deferred to next works, work session.
Okay, I'll entertain such a motion.
I, I move that all the deferrals be held to the May eleventh uh meeting.
Their second?
Second, second.
Properly moved the second in discussion. Hearing now, let's vote, Mister Clerk. Okay, this is a roll call vote to defer uh Z twenty zero zero eight, Z twenty zero zero nine, C V twenty zero zero one, M twenty one zero zero three, and C V twenty zero zero one. Do I have all the cases? I think you do. Okay. Let's vote. Councilmember Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Co- Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Khalid?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Those items are deferred into the May eleventh meeting. Thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion on executive session if you want, Gil.
I move that we go into executive session for personal real estate and litigation.
Second.
Properly moved the second in discussion. Hearing now, let's vote, please. Roll call vote, Councilmember Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Khalid? Mister Khalid? Khalid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Uh, that item was approved to go into executive session at seven thirty P M. Okay. Take us out.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes, uh, Helen, I hope your mom is feeling better.
I'm headed back to the hospital.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid? Mister Khalid?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
We reconvened at seven fifty-nine. It was unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion adjourned.
We didn't put on any issues back in the back. Am I correct, Mr. Clerk? That is correct. Okay, I, I'll entertain a motion.
He already made one, Baker, Councilman Baker.
I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn, sir.
Okay, sir. The second, by Miss, 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 Miss Rob?
Yep.
Any, any discussion? Hearing now, let's vote, Mister Clerk. Roll call vote to adjourn, Councilmember Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Khalid?
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
I got you, Councilmember Reeves. We are adjourned at seven fifty-nine P M.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.